We're just working on the live stream right now, we'll be starting in a few moments.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, we're ready to go.
Okay. Before we start, I welcome everyone. Before we start, I will remind council that this portion of the meeting is being recorded and livestreamed to YouTube. I will remind council to speak clearly and project their voice when they are talking so people viewing at home can hear. I will now do a roll call for the benefits of the public watching this meeting. When I call your name, please wave at the camera and say here or present. And Councilor Shonts, I am present and chairing this meeting. Councilor Martin. Hey. Councilor McMillan.
Present.
Thank you. Councilor Merlehan.
I'm present.
Thank you. Councilor Reddick.
I'm present.
You. And Mayor Shonts.
And I am present also.
Okay, I need a resolution to reconvene an open session. Somebody to move that second it. Councilor McMillan and Mayor Shonts. All in favor? Could I remind everyone if you're, could you mute mics if you're not talking, please? Thank you. Can we get council up the front page or no?
Yes, it would help if everyone who's not actively speaking can turn off their video just for the, just for this, this time and then as you, as you begin to speak, it will help if you can turn your video back on.
Perfect, thank you. Okay. So we have a mover and a seconder for the reconvene. All in favor? And that is carried, thank you. Disclosure of pecuniary interests. And I, you know. We have two items to come forward from closed session. I will ask for a call to review those, please, thank you.
Thank you, Chair Shonts. The first item regards surplus on Woolwich Street North. The motion for council to consider is that the council of the township of Woolwich, considering report DS 192020 respecting the Woolwich Street North surplus, direct staff to one, move forward with commissioning the survey that the surplus lands within the Woolwich Street road allowance and such costs shall be incurred by the property owners at forty-nine and sixty-one Woolwich Street North. And number two, move forward with preparation of purchase and sale agreements with each respective property owner, subject to council agreeing to purchase prices of two hundred and thirteen dollars and eleven cents per square meter.
Thank you. Did I have a mover and a seconder? Councilor Merlehan, Councilor Martin. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? And that's carried, thank you. And now there's a second one, again, it's clear.
This is for Stock Street in Winterburn. The motion is that the council of the township of Woolwich authorize the mayor and clerk by bylaw to execute agreements of purchase and sale as drafted and as attached in appendix A to report DS twenty-two dash twenty twenty for the sale of a portion of Stock Street in Winterburn and that the township's solicitor be authorized to finalize the agreement.
Thank you. Do I have a mover and a seconder for that? Councilor Reddick. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? And that is carried, thank you. We have no planned public meeting. We have presentation of the audited financial statement and I'll ask Mr. Patrick to have comments for the presentation. Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So in order for us to wrap up two thousand and nineteen and per se put it into the books, one of the things we have to do is present the audited financial statements to council who acts as our audit committee. So we have with us tonight Matt Beddick, who is one of the partners that are auditing the firm that does the audit for the township KPMG. He's here to run through his audit findings report for council and then I'd be happy to take any questions that council may have. So I'll take it. I'll turn over to Mr. Beddick.
Okay, well, welcome.
Thank you. If I can jump right into our presentation, I think I'll take five or six minutes to go through any of the formal pieces while I share my screen and then we'll have moments at the end for questions. So can I confirm that you're seeing our cover page, which is a picture of the bridge?
Yes, that looks good.
Excellent, thank you. So before I get into the formal pieces, I want to let council know that because of the COVID nineteen restrictions, we were required to do our audit almost completely from offsite, which is a significant challenge for, for your staff. And I want to say that they, they came out doing that very, very well and we really appreciate how, how adaptable and how efficient things still got done despite the challenges that everybody were faced. So thanks to Rich and Emily and the rest of their team in helping us get to this point. In your agenda materials, starting on page six, we do have the draft financial statements of the township and those have been prepared on a consistent basis as they have been in the past. We are, for all intents and purposes, done our audit. We just need to complete this process here and then we'll be issuing a clean audit opinion on those financial statements. And as Rich said, you know, put nineteen, two thousand and nineteen in the books. As I go through, I want to just highlight a few things through the presentation as we go. So on this page, we do provide a bit of a trend of the surplus, the annual surplus, and this is for accounting purposes in the financial statements. So you'll see that in two thousand and nineteen, there was a surplus of about six point seven million dollars, which seems about roughly average over the last seven years. I want to remind committee here that this surplus is different from the surplus that would otherwise be calculated through the budgetary model process and consistent with how you would set your budget and calculate your tax.
They clicked you off.
For example, some things, these financial statements in this surplus includes depreciation expense for capital assets, but does not include about eight and a half million of capital expenditures during the year. Furthermore, reserve, net reserve and reserve fund transfers, which you have as expenses, those are not shown as expenses in these financial statements. Lastly, the dividends that the dividends that Waterloo North Hydro pays to the township are not recorded as income, but you do record as income.
Mr. Beddick.
Their, their earnings, yes?
Just for a second, we have somebody else that needs to mute their mic. If you could mute your mic. Is that good? Okay, you can continue now, sorry about that, thank you.
No problem at all. Moving on to the, to the next page, I want to just remind the committee as well that these financial statements also include the business improvement areas for both Almyra and St. Jacobs, as well as the township's twenty point two percent interest in Waterloo North Hydro Holding. On this slide, as I've said before, we are required under audit standards to communicate both our risk and results from the consideration of fraud in the audit and cutting straight to the chase. Based on the procedures and the risk assessments we performed, we had no findings whatsoever here. On the next several slides, we do walk through the major areas of focus for the audit. These are largely consistent with the prior years as well as consistent with all of our audits of municipalities across the financial statements or across the province. There were no specific findings on any of these areas here, so that is also good news. We do want to note on the tangible capital asset slide, two things. The current year, you know, additions to assets were about eight point seven million, whereas your amortization was about six and a half million. This generally means that you're, you know, replacing your assets, you know, faster than they're being used up. And also during two thousand and eighteen, there were a large amount of contributed assets, about three and a half million, for which there was no similar amount in the current year. As I walk through the rest of the report, I have one final comment to make. On, on this slide, we talked about adjustments and differences and I have talked about this before. So in the preparation of the statements, we were, we are required to identify any corrections or differences that remain uncorrected. Happy to say this year there are neither. And what that really means is that the books and records that we received, you know, didn't need to be adjusted, nor do we find any things that need to be corrected to see what you've got today. So that means there's a, there's a high level of accuracy of the financial information that's being accumulated and reported up to us throughout the process. So that is a very, very good, good outcome for the township. I would say the rest of our presentation is fairly perfunctory materials that we provide for information purposes and I don't think it makes a lot of sense to go through them in detail, but I can turn it back over to the chair to facilitate any questions.
Thank you. Do we have any questions? Councilor Merle.
Yeah, through you Chair Shonts, to either Richard or, or Mr. Batik. When you mentioned in your presentation that the township is using or replacing assets faster than they're being used up, can you be a little bit more specific in, in, in the area of assets you're talking about? And I understand that, you know, in financial accounting, you know, they might say a computer has five years that you got to write off the computer or whatever it is and, and we're replacing it sooner than that. Is that, just as an example, but can you be more specific with what you noticed in, in that?
So without, without providing more details, it is, is difficult to be more specific. That is on average and does include all of the assets of the municipality. So that would include all your sort of roads, bridges, sidewalks, water and wastewater, infrastructure, playground equipment and the likes. It's probably not about sort of computers and furniture and fixtures and probably even not buildings, but I think it's really more around the longer term and infrastructure related assets. So we have to dive a little bit deeper into the numbers to say specifically which categories that's, that's attached to. So my comments were only at, at a, at a very high level for the whole municipality.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions or comments? Councilor McMillan?
And just to follow up to that, to piggyback on what Councilman Merlehan said, was it, was it dug deeper into to know specifically what assets were being replaced before their life expectancy? Do we have that information somewhere? I, I wonder how we have that high level statement without being able to have that, you know, more specific information to support it somewhere.
Yeah, so, sorry, Rich, do you, do you want to comment?
Yeah, through you, Mr. Chairman, I, I think it's not a matter of actually replacing the, the assets before its time. You have to remember, some of these assets are, you know, thirty, forty, fifty years old. So the value of the day that they were put on our books was significantly lower compared to the value that the current, what we've actually just added in two thousand and nineteen. So what it looks like is the number that's dropping off from an amortization starts to, you know, decrease as you, as you get rid of these assets. But then as you bring in more assets, those, those, that depreciation cost, you know, does grow. But really what it's saying though is, is that we were replacing our assets when we, we should have. We are trying to look at actually getting this consistency of, of spending more in our assets than we're writing off on our amortization. We want to be in that position because that means we're actually keeping up with our assets and that is a good thing. But it does not mean that we're replacing our assets before its time. We actually are still probably replacing our assets, not in the time that we should, much later than we should be replacing them. However, this trend is showing that we're actually starting to make headway in some of our infrastructure deficit.
Yep. Any other questions?
Yes.
Seeing none, do I have a mover and a seconder for this report? Councilor Merlehan? Mayor Shonts? Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? And that is carried. Thank you, Mr. Bethic.
Well, you're welcome, thank you.
Next, we have Mr. Pupay. Traffic bylaw on Grandview Drive.
Thank you, through you Chairman Shonts to council. I just wanted to advise that the amending bylaw before the committee this evening is seeking to repeal bylaw eighty-five twenty eighteen, which was enacted in November of two thousand and eighteen to restrict heavy trucks from Grandview Drive. And this was done in response to concerns regarding heavy truck traffic and we are proposing to replace that bylaw with a new amending bylaw. The new amending bylaw, if passed, would continue to prohibit heavy trucks on Grandview, but would allow for the over dimensional farm vehicles, as defined by the Highway Traffic Act, to access Grandview Drive. This proposed amending bylaw then is consistent with the province's Highway Traffic Act and it grants certain exemptions for those farm vehicle types. The amending bylaw is considered necessary to protect the Grandview Drive road network and also to ensure public safety as Grandview Drive is a residential area. I would say that, Rick, what the recommendation before the committee tonight is to, is to move the proposed amending bylaw to the August eleventh council meeting for ratification. That was all I would have right now.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Pupay before we hear from the delegation? Seeing none, there are eight delegations registered for this meeting. Since we have many people who would like to speak, I will ask delegates to keep the comments brief and to keep to ten minute time limit. So we will start with Caitlin Horst.
Here we go.
Welcome Caitlin.
Hi, is it working?
Yes.
Perfect, okay. I don't like this stuff. All right, can I just, do you want me to just go ahead and speak?
Sure.
Okay. So I am a homeowner on Grandview Drive and our house is right off the entrance of the main road. I could list many concerns we have with the changes trying to be made, but I'll just stick with the number one concern with my husband and I, which is my five young kids. When moving here, what appealed to us was the quiet street and the fact that it was off of the main road. So a few vehicles coming through. We have five kids with our oldest being six, so as you can imagine, rules of the road are still being learnt. Also, our front yard is our main source of area to play. The kids spend most days out front and when we aren't playing there, we're also walking Grandview with our strollers or bike, just like most residents do also. So if this become busier or with bigger vehicles allowed, I'm very concerned for the safety of my kids. And that is our main concern with what's going on. I would hate to see this nice, quiet and safe residential street turn into anything more. And that's all I have.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Questions for the delegate? I'm seeing none, so thank you.
Thanks.
We'll move on to Martha Moulman, is that correct?
That is correct, thank you.
Yes, okay, thank you, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is Martha Moulman and I'm also a homeowner on Grandview Drive and I'm happy to say that most of my questions and concerns have been addressed and answered. So I would just go ahead and listen to the rest, thank you.
Thank you very much. Any questions for the delegate? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to Keenan Curtis. Keenan, are you here?
Uh, yeah, yeah, I am here. So I am also a resident on sixty-three Grandview Drive. I was hoping to speak and voice my opposition on the proposed bylaw change. While speaking, I'd also like to propose my opposition to the prec amendment, which has also been included in the materials for this meeting. So my opposition for both of these stem from the same basic points. However, I feel the prec amendment essentially takes everything that is bad about this bylaw change proposal and makes it significantly worse. So I'm sure that eventually this meeting will get around to actually having the proposal explained. But essentially, our, my main concern as being a resident here is exactly why we are going to have to go and have the costs of somebody else's economic activity passed on to us. And before I get too far into it, I want to kind of get ahead of anybody trying to say that this is just a case of not in my backyardism. And I want to highlight that the, the cost of allowing the ECA, the machinery that has been used on this farm historically and that they are proposing to use on this orchard in the future is real material and actually everybody agrees that it is real material and that impacts the noise, safety and quality of life of anybody that has to endure it. In fact, free, the PRC lawyers referred to the equipment as not, let me see here, it's not appropriate for the use on residential laneways. They've also equated having this equipment driving by their residence as persecution from the township and have gone on to continue again and again with their justification for their proposal to highlight how having this far, this farm equipment and other equipment, because some of this was fillback trucks that they were using last time before this proposal, driving by their house is important enough and a big enough issue for them to hire a lawyer, a top law firm, and try to change the law to pass that burden on to somebody else. And on that point, that's the key of what this is, is it's a private business trying to pass the cost of their private business on to the members and public of a township. So we have the, we have the cars, we have the trucks, but this isn't just a Ward three problem. This is a whole Woolwich problem because it also comes down to the difference between Catherine Street and sixty-three Grandview Drive, both of which have access to this farm. One is a paved multi lane road, the other one is a tar and chip residential loop that has families, elderly people that enjoy walking and I'm hoping somebody else will talk about the dimensions and the actual practicality of having a car pass an oversized farm vehicle on the hills here because I don't think it's even possible. If this, I, I don't know if the township was planning for this loop to become a residential throughway when they were budgeting out what type of roading and what type of infrastructure was being put up here, but that would have been a waste of resources historically to the, what used to be the normal traffic up here, which would just be residential cars. So if this proposed amendment were to come through, or even just the oversized farm equipment and the loopholes that that allows were to come through, the increased usage would eventually result in, and I mean, somebody more professional might speak to this as well, costed the taxpayers of Woolwich will all have to face the burden of. So essentially what I'm seeing here is somebody who is earning money off of this property and who has been operating this property for several years with this bylaw in place, looking to go and pass the noise, the danger, the dirt and the cost of this traffic going and entering through off of a, a major road on to the twenty-three residents of a quiet suburb. And I think it's absolutely ridiculous. I, I think the request to go and have the vehicle, a municipal bylaw that has the effect of restricting times during the vehicle does not apply to the vehicle if, and then it down here, it says there is no road that could serve as a reasonable alternative, saying that Catherine Street does not serve as an alternative to Grandview Drive is ridiculous. Anybody who's not familiar with these roads, I'll happily invite you down here and show you the two roads in question. We have to be careful on Catherine Street because it's actually a used road. The only other interpretation here is that the farm's trying to go and define their driveway as a residential road and that their driveway should be more protected by the township than the actual residential road of twenty-three households. The, 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 the amount, the lack of community thought in this amendment and the fact that this amendment was put forward and then the people proposing it asked to go after the community speaks, I think shows just the, the, the lack of actual cares given about the people living around this property. And I would want to get ahead of any statements by that party in the future of trying to claim that it's a community oriented organization as they do on their promotional materials or any type of community commitment. Because any organization that's committed to a community would not try to have dump trucks driving past family homes with small children on narrow streets with pretty tight corners that's tar and chip when they have access off of a main road that has been functional for the last three years. I don't really have anything else, thanks for your time.
Thank you. Any comments or questions for the delegate? Seeing none, thank you, Keenan. Next, we have Lee Kalenda.
That's me, hi.
Welcome, Lee.
Hi, thanks. Okay. I can speak?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay. So hi, everyone, my name is Lee Kalenda and I live at one forty-six Grandview Drive in Conestoga. I've lived here for twenty-seven years. And the reason why we chose to live here was because it was our dream to live in the country, have a safe and quiet environment for our children to be raised in and to take in all of the pluses of what country living had to offer. I feel very fortunate to live in a community where neighbors respect one another. People walk around the block, children play, neighbors talk to one another and have get togethers, et cetera. We support each other and there is a real strong sense of community here that has only deepened throughout the years. I am not in agreement to the proposed amendment being put forth by Miller Thompson on behalf of their client, Mr. Pritsa, whereby they are suggesting the definition of heavy truck in the traffic and parking bylaw be revised to allow any vehicle used in relation to an agricultural operation. This is a broad statement and can mean anything, including dump trucks. There is a history of this property owner abusing Grandview Drive and having lots of dump trucks in excess of sixty per day within and out of our road with no regard to the children, the residents that live here, putting them in harm's way with this practice. Pictures of what we had to deal with in two thousand and eighteen have been submitted for review. There are twenty-three households on Grandview Drive. Our residential road is not structured to support the agriculture vehicle equipment Miller Thompson's client is suggesting travel it from April first to December. The safety hazard is a major concern, especially for the young families and children, not to mention the wear and the tear and the damage to the road and the dust and the noise that will be significant. Especially during the timeframe of April first to December, when the weather is nice and people are outdoors. Is it reasonable to endanger the safety of children and residents of Grandview Drive for the sake of one property owner, twenty-three homeowners versus one property owner? I also disagree when Miller Thompson states that the access on Catherine Street to the subject property is a residential one, not suitable for heavy agricultural related vehicles. By their definition, the same can be applied to Grandview Drive as it is also a residential one and not suitable for heavy agricultural related vehicles. However, the difference with this is that the road on Catherine Street is asphalted and can accommodate for heavy agricultural related vehicles as right now, many of those vehicles travel the road all the time. There are no children that play on Catherine Street. It is a busy road and people seldom walk on that street. Common sense would dictate that Catherine Street would be the access point for this. Common sense would dictate that Catherine Street would be the access point for this equipment to access to and from the orchard. The property at five oh six Catherine Street has twelve hundred and eighty feet of frontage. Twelve hundred and eighty. And this property owner operates a business at this location. The simple straightforward solution to this would be to use the road access at Catherine Street. And if it currently isn't sufficient to accommodate the agricultural related vehicles, then it's up to this business owner to make the necessary changes or upgrades at this location to make it work. That is the cost of doing business. I too am a business owner. It would seem highly unjust to pass on the cost of doing business for my own profits on to a small residential community. And I would welcome the counselors and anyone here at tonight's meeting to come out here and see what we're talking about. I'd like you to see Grandview Drive. I'd like you to see Catherine Street so that you know what we're talking about. And I hope that this can all be resolved by taking a common sense approach and using the Catherine Street access. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for the delegate? Seeing none. Thank you, Lee. Next, we have, okay, next, we have Yogi Ben Nicky. I understand your video isn't working, so go ahead. Yogi, are you there? Is your mic muted? Try unmuting your mic, Yogi. Okay.
Okay, can you hear me?
We can now.
Okay. Okay, I apologize. I'm having camera issues, but I will speak. So we have lived on Grandview for eleven years, and the land behind Grandview was always farmed during this timeframe and longer, according to neighbors. So basically, since the seventies, there have been no issues with farming until two thousand and eighteen. We are definitely in opposition to any changes at all. Grandview Drive is not a paved road. It is tar and chip road typically used on rural and low volume traffic roads such as ours. The road itself is seventeen feet, six inches wide without a shoulder and does not provide the space required to drive an oversized vehicle in one direction and a common car SUV or pickup truck in the opposite direction without driving on the grassy areas in front of the homes, not to mention any pedestrians that may be out there. The Pritsa Farm is located on Catherine Street with twelve hundred and eighty foot frontage, which provides more than enough opportunity to access the farm. Their own legal team writes in their letter that access to the subject property is a residential one and not suitable for heavy agricultural related vehicles. Well, that statement says it all. So every residential home on Grandview needs to be compromised, but their own home should not be. Speaking with the township, I discovered that the Pritsa Farm has both a residential and an agricultural zoning with the actual laneway off of Grandview in question being a residential zoning. Interestingly enough, Catherine Street is designed for two-way heavy traffic, paved road with a shoulder, not tar and chip construction. In two thousand and eighteen, the residents suffered greatly by the overwhelming number of dump trucks going by at times nonstop. The road was constantly covered in mud, which made walking dangerous and dirty. Our individual driveways were impacted, covered by the mud as we would have to drive through the ruts to get to our homes. The dust, dirt, and noise were constant. The photos provided show the level of dump trucks lined up waiting at times to access the Pritsa Farm. This went on for months on end. The best predictor of future behavior is past behavior, and I feel the current bylaw protects us all from the overt abuse of this roadway. The bylaw was created precisely for this reason. The Pritzes have successfully farmed their property since two thousand and eighteen without the access to Grandview for heavy equipment. As a professional Realtor for the past twenty-five years, I know that property values on the street would only suffer should this bylaw be repealed. You only have to look at the photographs provided to see what an impact this would have on the neighborhood. Let's not let this jewel of Conestoga be spoiled by big business. We wish the Pritzes no malice and wish them every success in their business endeavors, but not at the expense of the entire neighborhood. In closing, a quote by the iconic Spock, "Logic clearly dictates the needs of the many outweigh the needs of the few." Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Seeing none. Thank you, Yogi.
You're welcome.
Next, we have Grayson Pritsa. Welcome, Grayson.
Thank you. Well, good evening, there. Sandy Shawn's council members, staff, and members of the public. My name is Grayson Pritsa, and I'm the owner of five oh six Catherine Street. First, thank you for the opportunity to speak. I have a lot of motions regarding this matter, so I wrote something to convey my position, which I will read. My young family and I have lived six Catherine Streets for seven years. We initially were drawn to the community and property for its agricultural potential as a fruit farm. The soil conditions, multiple accesses to the property are features that were well, were appealing for an efficient and successful orchard operation. My family is involved in agriculture and seller properties within the township and have invested a lot of resources into those agricultural operations with hopes of continued growth in the future. When I purchased my property, there were three existing accesses. One residential access point from Catherine Street. Two agricultural related access points from Grandview Drive, all of which I have maintained. Through the initial setup of the orchard, I made a decision to fill, brought on to the property to level out parts for the farmland to make it more suitable for the plum orchard. Prior to shipping the fill, I implemented a control protocol to minimize the disturbance to the community. Through, I did not break any laws by bringing the fill in. I was personally disappointed with the disruption that it caused, the delivery of the fill cost to the neighbors and the damage it caused to my property. I accept responsibility for the issues that the cost caused. I am willing to compensate for any damages that is proven to be made by the cuts. It is my understanding that in response to this isolated issue, the township of Woolwich passed a bylaw restricting heavy trucks from accessing Grandview Drive and thereby restricting access to my property. I was not made aware of the passing of this bylaw, which directly impacted the ability to need to conduct normal farm practices on farmland it was intended. Farming has become an important part of my family's life, and we are disappointed that the township make new decisions that directly impact the viability of our agricultural operations. As it currently stands, the bylaw prevents access to my property for any farm equipment that is necessary to maintain spray and harvest of my fruit trees. The alternative existing access from Catherine Street cannot support the weight and size of the farm equipment, and as such, Grandview is the only access that can support the farm operation. By restricting the existing access from Grandview, my property cannot be used for any agricultural purposes, although it is designated zone and historically used for agricultural production. I am here this evening in support of revising the bylaw that would allow the movement of farm vehicles on Grandview. I understand the concern of the township and my neighbors. The circumstances that occurred previously were not my intent, and I do apologize for those impacts. I am certainly open to having ongoing conversation with the township and my neighbors to understand their concerns should farm vehicles be allowed to access my property. I want the opportunity to prevent any future issues. I hope we can continue this working relationship and find a reasonable resolution for all those impacts. My family and my goal is to contribute to the community and not to take away from it. Please advise if you have any questions, and I will do my best to answer them or directly to the appropriate members of the team.
Thank you. Any questions, Councilor Merleham?
Yeah, thank you, Chair Shawn. Through you to Mr. Prika. You mentioned just in your presentation that Catherine Street is unsuitable for, for farm equipment. Can you be more specific rather than just stating that it's unsuitable? Can you be specific in the needs that that equipment is and how Catherine Street is unable to meet those needs? It's a, it's a regional road and built for traffic and like some of your neighbors have mentioned, there's ample room, probably, probably more than than what you would see on Grandview. So I'm just wondering if you can be, like, drill down and be absolutely specific about what is inadequate about Catherine Street?
Well, Catherine itself, the chair, is, is, I don't have any particular like, I agree with what the neighbors are saying. The issue is that the laneway off of Catherine Street coming off towards my property is going through a GRCA protected area, narrow and crosses over a GRCA protected area that with the bridge that's, I'm not really even sure the age of it, but it's in very poor condition where trucks and heavy equipment cannot pass through it without risking it collapsing or the equipment going within the creek itself. And I've made best efforts to, and I've retained legal services, planning services, surveyors, and I've looked at many options, and it's just not something that can be, that I can support or that I could exercise on. So it's the street Catherine Street itself, I agree with what the neighbors are saying, but the problem is the access to my property.
Okay, I'll leave it there for now for somebody else to ask you a question. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilor McMillan, did I see your hand up?
Yeah, thank you, Chair, through you. Mr. Prika said that the bylaw, the way it's currently written, doesn't allow for farming to happen on his property. The bylaw has been in place for two years. Has farming occurred? Have you been able to harvest fruit while this bylaw has been in place for the last two years?
I have maintained the operation, mainly of spraying the trees. The trees are fairly young, so there has not been a substantial harvest. So the operation that I'm maintaining, excuse me. Sorry, the young family. Sir, could you repeat the question?
Yeah, I was just wondering, you said that farming wasn't possible with the bylaw as it's currently written, but the bylaw is two years old, so I was just wondering, has farming been happening on the farm for the last two years?
Yes, it has. So there hasn't been a major harvest. The trees are still relatively young, and I've used the Grandview access over the last two years in order to operate the orchard.
Other questions?
Councilor Merle. Thank you. Through you to the delegate. In your presentation, you said that any road damage that's done in Grandview, you'd be more than willing to pay for and repair. I'm not sure how you can say that, that there was damage done in two thousand and eighteen, and when I checked the staff, nothing has been done. The spot damage or edges of the road that were broke away, and it's still that way. Can you respond to that, please?
Yes, through your chair. In the shortly after, I believe it was shortly after the incident happened, the previous director of Township Woolwich came out and photographed the roads, and we did a full walk around the property, and he documented the areas of damage. And from that time, I still remains that I'm willing and able to pay for any compensation for that damage. And it was recorded with photographs. I don't have the pictures personally, but I believe this was something that the township would have.
You're good, Mark. Okay, Councilor Mark, your councilor.
Okay, thank you, Chair Shawn. Your last answer to one of my questions about, about Catherine Street, you mentioned that you're in a GRCA protected zone. Has the GRCA limited your access officially with any kind of notice to you saying that you can't do farming activity on that portion of your property?
I'll let one of the team members answer that question. I would just there a little more in tune with the details and they were in correspondence with both the region and the GRCA, so I'd allow them to speak on their issue.
Okay, Mr. Handy, welcome. You have an answer for that.
Thank you, Chair, through you to the counselor, Merleham. We have had some discussions, ongoing discussions with the GRCA staff under the direction of Dan Canali would have been involved at that time in relation to looking at alternative access. GRCA has not said that access would not be available, but that access at the north end of the property on Catherine, we looked at other options. That is a wetland area, regulated wetland area, and they, so we looked at an option of having a road at the north end of Grayson's property. That was not acceptable. They said that another access at the north side of the pond could be a potential, but that would require an environmental impact study to be completed. And then thirdly, the existing access is, is over a pond, a small bridge. Mr. Canali, I think, as Grayson had mentioned, visited the property with the three of us, walked the neighborhood, and he would have those photos. I'm not sure that they were passed on to Mr. Prepe, but they are within the townships at their, at their end, at your end.
Okay, I guess I have more questions than, in particular about the bridge. A bridge to your property and to your business is kind of important to maintain safety. And right now, you're saying that it's not, it's not safe. Has it been deemed unsafe by an official engineer? Have you taken measures to make that bridge so it's safe for anybody who just enters onto your property? There's lots of things about the bridge that I'm just questioning. You know, why is it that you can't use your own laneway to access your, your property? Is there, is there zero access from Catherine Street to get to the portion of your property that is being accessed by Grandview?
So at my current, this is, I just want to clarify, like, I personally live at the property, and my residential home is basically right off of that bridge entrance. So if you were to look at the property, the distance between the laneway and my house is about ten feet, where my garage starts. So the access road is wrong there, and the bridge itself is something that just supports residential access to my house. It doesn't, like, it's not something that's used for heavy equipment or larger pieces of equipment that can go on that road.
Okay, and you're not willing, you're not willing to update that bridge access to access your property?
I would like to maintain the accesses from Grandview for the agricultural portion of my property.
And you can't, you can't maintain it, like, the, the equipment that you're using. You know, you, you have a lot of neighbors in that, in your neighborhood that, that aren't happy about, they weren't happy about the situation, and we saw the pictures there. If you came rolling into my neighborhood on Second Street, and it was a consistent truck rolling by there, I probably would be feeling much like your neighbors, and I, and I can understand their frustration. So have you taken every single measure at this point to make sure your Catherine Street entrance can sustain your farming community or your, your farming business and supporting that, because that really seems like that would be the prudent thing to do as a businessman.
Yeah, so as far as the trucking, trust me, it was something that I am very upset as well. And the day that, the time period which it happened, I did make efforts to try to kind of mitigate it. And it was something that I was disappointed in the way it happened, and that is not my intention to ever create that mess on the road again. Like, that is absolutely not the goal here. I'm not using the Grandview entrance for trucking fill for any of those purposes. It's purely for the exact operation that existed there prior to me. It's purely for the exact operation that existed there prior to me owning the property. And even before I started the orchard, I was renting out the property to another farmer. And they were using the Grandview access with no issues and no problem to service the crop. So like from for this, the intention here, I don't think it is not to creatively create dump trucks. And I don't want to have bad relationships with my neighbors or cause them issues. I was really something that I wanted most of them walk the orchard itself and and I don't mind and have any issues with the neighborhood. And my intent here is not to have heavy dump trucks of dirt floating down the sidewalk, down the road every single day. Like, that's all at all. It is purely just to use the access for farming agricultural purposes as it has done before I brought the property, after I bought the property in in current. And I I've two years, I've 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 like, I've really dug deep to try to figure out what I can do to make this work. I have not done any work on the property since, other than maintaining the trees that are there. And I've been patiently waiting for an opportunity to try to discuss, and there's always that.
Okay, thank you for your answers.
Counselor McMillan?
Yes, thank you. So this was a fruit orchard before you purchased it?
No, it was used for commercial crops. So when I first purchased, I think it was corn and soy that years before I started to farm. And they were using farm equipment using Grandview accesses.
So.
And their equipment for that commercial crops will be much larger than the equipment that I require to do the fruit farming.
So there was a big influx of heavy traffic while you adapted the property to be an orchard. There hasn't been much in the last two years while the trees have grown. How are we going to compare the the traffic on Grandview going forward from now? Now that the the all of the excavating has been done and the the dump trucks and the backfill has has been moved. How are we going to compare the trucks going forward from here and the the heavy traffic, farming traffic? How are we going to compare that to what has historically been? Is it different because it's an orchard?
So I think that the way that operation has been functioning over the last two years since this bylaw passed, that has been like there, I haven't seen any complaints or or any calls from the township or my neighbors regarding any issue for the equipment that I've used. And the only difference between what has happened, let's say, this season and a season where harvest would be, which would be kind of two to three years from now, would just be the harvest portion of the orchard where I'd have to have trucks for a few weeks, not delivery, like reefer trucks come and take the harvest off the property. So the only traffic that they have not seen this season that would be in kind of the three to four year period would be that harvest tree to take the crop off the property.
Thank you, Chair. Just one more question. You talked about the bridge over the pond. Obviously, I'm looking at it from Google Street View here. It would be an extensive project to make that that roadway over the pond be able to handle heavy commercial traffic. What would the cost comparison be to fixing, updating the bridge to hold commercial versus maintaining the 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 Grandview road that you've committed to financially maintaining? What what's the cost difference between up upgrading the bridge to hold commercial traffic to the ongoing maintenance on Grandview?
I I would just like to clarify, as far as the making the commitment to maintain Grandview, obviously, it's for the trucks that are heard. But as far as, obviously, if I have large piece of like, I'm not sure the damage that are the tractor that's currently being used would have on Grandview. And as far as the cost analysis between kind of fixing anything may happen in the future versus what the cost would be to repair the bridge. I don't, I haven't really done a calculation to kind of see what that is. Like, for me, it's something that that Catherine Street entrance is something that I don't even see valuable as accessing the property.
You you don't see it as viable based on like, like, if you haven't done the cost benefit analysis, if you can't tell me that it's going to cost X amount of dollars, what is the basis of the lack of viability on that entrance?
So I think just from the simple fact of the the process to work with the GRCA to even try to get permission to rebuild that bridge, the cost to rebuild the bridge and it would make that the traffic would be six feet from my front door. And when I originally bought the property, my intention was just to use what the infrastructure of the property had to continue an agricultural production that was already in place. So it's it's that's kind of like, it's just a the situation that it is.
Thank you. I appreciate the answers.
Anyone else?
Are delegates allowed to ask questions?
Sorry. Mr. Preaka, I have a couple of questions. One, do you have any road frontage on Sawmill Road at all?
Sorry, the call, the question broke up. Can you repeat, please?
Do you have any road frontage on Sawmill Road on your, from your farm?
Road frontage? No, I don't.
Okay. Anyone else? Any questions for Mr. Preaka? Okay.
I do.
Sorry. Thank you, Mr. Preaka. Mr. Hand, if anything else you want to add?
Thank you, Chair Shants. There is a few things that I would add to our presentation. Obviously, we've gone over some of the GRGRCA discussions as well as the as the the road damage, so I won't go over those again. But just for the record, I'm a land use planner with GSP Group. I was retained by Drazen Pritza following the enactment of the original bylaw in late 2018. The Preaka Farm, just I don't think, because it's been brought up at this point, is about fifty-three acres in size and about forty-two of those are the orchard that are planted with the plums. The the majority of the the farm, I think we've heard there's some zoning related to the subdivision. But the it's designated rural in the Woolwich official plan. And as many of you will counselors will know, the intent of that designation is to protect, preserve, and encourage the continued use of those lands for farming. The site is also zoned. The majority of the farm is zoned agricultural. Again, farming is is the main use as well as other related use. The farm predates, as far as my research goes, the farm predates the subdivision. And as part of that subdivision, two access points from Grandview were provided for access to the farm. And one of those is a municipal road access and the other one is a laneway access off of Grandview. There has been, and I think one of the delegates even mentioned this, there has been ongoing farming operation on this property for many years. And we are not aware of any concerns with the prior farm, with the operation that was prior to the current Pritza Farm operation. And of course, qualifying that in relation to not the activity that occurred in terms of the dumping of material on the property or bringing fill in. Meaning to add to what I previously said, and I thank you for the opportunity to speak to committee. And I'd be happy as well to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions for the handy? Mayor Shant?
Thank you. So based on your work, then there is no other access or no other access point of this week that would work?
Through you, Mr. Chair, to the mayor. We had looked at with with Mr. Canali, that your former planning director talked with the GRCA, the very, I guess, portion of the frontage along Catherine, the most northern part is is part of a regulated wetland area. As we were looking at the potential of, could we move the access point away from Drazen's residential access point to the north, that was not acceptable. The other potential access was north of the pond, which would require an environmental impact study to be completed. And then we get back to the the existing access bridge, which is very small widthwise over a culvert. So we we felt we needed to exhaust those, and that was in communication with the township. And so, yes, at this point, we felt that, given the historical access through the subdivision and how Drazen purchased the property, that 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 would continue to act as the agricultural access.
Yeah, three, your counselor Shants. I actually wanted to have a question directed to Mr. Poopay. I'm just through the documents, through the Preaka Orchard letterhead here and through the their legal service, there's some pictures here of the typical farm equipment that they would use. In our bylaw, how much of this equipment would not pass as being, you know, too heavy for for Grandview use? You know, some of it, you know, looks like typical things that you would see on a farm. Other things look a little bit bigger, but can you can you speak to those specific vehicles that they provided in their documents?
Sure, thank you. Through Chairman Shants to Counselor Merlehan. I think I do it in reverse and say what would be permitted under the proposed and amending bylaw. So the bylaw would allow for numbers one and two, three, which is the toilet cleaning truck, as well as the two trailers identified as number nine and ten, the harvest bin trailer and the picking platform. So we are respecting of the agricultural use. And and then so there would be some equipment then and then obviously counters that you would not be permitted because it's over number four would not be permitted, five, six, nor would seven, eight, or the float truck number eleven.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Handy? One question I have, Mr. Handy, is you have any idea how many days in the spring and fall that they would need access there? I would think that probably during the growing season, they wouldn't really need a lot of equipment going in and out. Do you have any feel for that?
Mr. Chair, there definitely would be some activity and obviously in the fall harvest and and maybe I'd be best to ask the farmer to respond to that if he could.
Ask that, and I forgot. So, Mr. Preaka, can you answer that, Mr. Preaka?
Yes, basically, it would mainly be just the harvest time. And I'm accounting for around fifteen to twenty days, depending on the what the season. And the way that the variety of fruit has been planted, it's not all slated to basically be harvested at one time. It's done at a steady pace where enough time for the traffic to be controlled and it wouldn't be like a high traffic, a lot of trucks coming at the same time. It's all, it would be all staggered staggered over like a month and a half period, two month period between fifteen to twenty harvest days.
And the other question I have is, once you've got the equipment on site, would that not stay on the farm? You wouldn't be moving that equipment in and out every year, would you? It would stay on the property?
So some of the pieces could stay at the property, but since we do own multiple farms in the area, they're reservicing multiple of the proper farm properties in the area. So it's not the one piece equipment would stay here. It's mostly that it's servicing the multiple farms in the area.
Thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Handy? Seeing them, we have one more delegate, Mr. Eric Davis. Welcome, Mr. Davis.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair, and thank you to the members of committee. My name is Eric Davis. I'm a municipal and planning law lawyer with Miller Thompson. I municipal and planning law is all I do, so this stuff is is pretty much par for the course. I'm not going to reiterate my letter because I don't find that that's generally helpful because most people can read the letter and and understand it. What I did want to do is perhaps just go through a bit of the history and and sort of where we are now. So as you all know, and as I think has been stated repeatedly, is that before about 2018 or so, my understanding is that the township received no complaints in relation to the Preaka Farm. What happened is that, as as Drazen mentioned, is that he imported a number, a bit of fill to a bit, a fair bit of fill to the property to assist in making it suitable for a plum orchard. He did that over several days. And that obviously raised a number of different complaints, which the township received. And obviously, we understand those complaints. We appreciate them. And as Mr. Preaka has indicated, the intention is for that to never happen again. Obviously, though, bringing in the fill was not unlawful, there was no bylaw to our knowledge that Mr. Preaka breached. Obviously, he laments the impact that had on his neighbors and does not want to do that. And so the township passed the bylaw, the original sort of amending bylaw to the highway and to the traffic and parking bylaw to ensure that no heavy trucks could access Grandview Drive or to at least prohibit heavy trucks from accessing Grandview Drive. And so we understand that is the case. The challenge that we have is just, obviously, one of part of my job is to try to avoid my client breaching bylaws and or being prosecuted by the township for breaching bylaws. And right now, the only agricultural related access he has is off Grandview Drive. And our concern, as I expressed in my letter, is that the definition of heavy trucks in the traffic and parking bylaw is quite broad. And we do not want to use Grandview Drive unlawfully or and and face prosecution for for using that, which is why we've been trying for the past couple of years and tonight's council meeting to work with council and to work with the township to see if some kind of resolution can be reached. The issue of the Catherine Street access has been raised. And one of the challenges, as I think Mr. Preaka and Mr. Handy mentioned, is that the vast majority of frontage that one sees along Catherine Street, if not, if not most of it or practically all of it, is regulated by the Grand River Conservation Authority. We've reached out to the GRCA because initially we thought, well, let's, you know, have an access, perhaps explore an alternate access on the north of the property. And that's the furthest potential place you can get from Grandview Drive. And then we'll access access it from the north. The challenge being is that, as Mr. Handy outlined, is that that's a wetland and the GRCA is basically indicated that they would almost certainly not be in favor. Their entreaty to undertake a very expensive environmental impact assessment or, you know, environmental impact study does not mean that once one is done, that the GRCA would actually give any permission to allow an alternative access off of Catherine Street. So that's one of the challenges. And then also, you know, right now, there's a bridge access off Catherine Street over a culvert that is not meant for heavy vehicle traffic. And we're not even sure that that would even practically work and likely cost, I I would submit a significant amount of money in perhaps studies, getting the necessary permissions and upgrades. I can only guess in the, you know, at least the high thousands of dollars, if not tens of thousands of dollars to upgrade that particular access. What we're looking to do is maintain the access off Grandview Drive to the agricultural property. And as has been noted, is that we don't believe that that was the source of complaints or will be the source of complaints moving forward. It's our understanding is that there has not been an issue for the past little while, at least in relation to accessing Grandview Drive to the orchard. There may be some harvests, as have been discussed in the coming years, for Grandview Tribe. That would require trucks to access Grandview Tribe. That would require trucks to access Grandview Drive, but those would be time limited in nature. Obviously, during the harvest, it would not be all year and it would not be to the extent. Or the severity that one saw in relation to the fill process. And so really, in our view, the initial problem which council I respectfully submit was trying to solve has been addressed. There's not going to be any more fill trucks coming on to this property and we're not asking for the ability to bring in additional fill. Along this property. What we're trying to, what we're trying to do is just make sure that our client can utilize the accesses on Grandview Drive. To in order to continue utilizing the plum orchard. And what the bylaw that's being suggested tonight, we outlined some of our, some of our issues with it in our letter. And really, our concern is that the definition of over dimensional farm vehicle, though. You know, would not actually cover all of the vehicles which. We are concerned with and we tried to provide, as you saw in our Schedule A to our letter. A number of different vehicles there that our clients would be looking to use. And so really, what we're just trying to do and what we tried to propose was an exemption from the definition of heavy trucks for agricultural vehicles. Not only because that would arguably solve the problem in the present case and and it would tie it to a particular use of the property. So it would not allow heavy trucks writ large. It would allow heavy trucks that it would, it would just allow heavier trucks because the definition is so broad. That are solely for an agricultural purpose. And so because that's really what we're looking to do, because as Mister Handy outlined. The property in question is zoned agricultural, it is zoned, it's been zoned agricultural for many years. This agricultural parcel predates the subdivision, the Grandview subdivision. And so what we're just trying to do is ensure our client can maintain access. And so really, what we're here tonight to do is to try to. Work with the committee and work with the township to try to find a solution that would be. Reasonable for all concerns. We appreciate the township's attempt to try to address the issue. We're just a bit concerned, as as Mister Poupay outlined, that a number of the vehicles we've we've requested or that would be required for this. Orchard would run afoul of the traffic and parking bylaw, which is the exact issue that we're trying to avoid. And so that's really what we're trying to do here today is. Come to the committee, at least acknowledge and appreciate the township's efforts in relation to trying to find a solution. But perhaps outlining how we've come to this this conclusion when what we're looking for. Moving forward, if that makes sense. So, subject to any questions, any members of the committee may have, those would be my submissions.
Thank you.
Thank you. A couple of questions, just to make sure I understand what what you've just gone over. So do I understand that the trucks that Mister Preca will use would be more than the four point six metric tons? That you've identified here as a heavy truck?
So the the issue is is that, I mean, we can. Our our hope is that, you know, one of the issues we have is that one could look at the weight, unloaded weight of the particular vehicles. I'm not sure what some of the loaded weights of some of these vehicles might be. After in a harvest situation or what have you. And in looking at a number of these vehicles. The concern that we have is that if some of these happen to be over four point six. Tons that it would technically run afoul of the. Traffic and parking bylaw and that is something that we do not wish to happen.
So you don't, you're not really sure what the weight would be when it's when it's full of rocks?
No, I I do not know that weight.
Yeah, before you do that, I wanted to follow up on that. So what would the license weight be on that vehicle? That would, that would tell you what it's capable of hauling.
Well, and it depends which vehicle you were referring to. We've provided, as you can see on the Schedule A, a list of. Eleven different vehicles. I don't have necessarily the up to date allowable weight measurements on all the vehicles, but that's something we can provide the township with.
You wouldn't be able to give us the the legal weight, licensed weight of the largest vehicle, the heaviest vehicle? Or Mister Bray, Mister Brayson maybe could do that. Yeah, what what would that, what would the heaviest vehicle be licensed for on the road?
So like, kind of like, I don't have a specific load for this, but basically looking at the traffic. A garbage truck that comes on the right now is around forty tons. So a truck that would be used for this would be licensed around twenty tons. I think that that would be kind of a maximum. I don't see it going past that. So just to put it in perspective, the garbage truck is forty tons. Truck that I would be utilizing with full weight, I don't see it passing more than twenty tons.
Thank you. Mayor Sean, do you have another question?
Excuse me, my question is for Mister Poupay. What what is the weight limit on a tar and chip road on Grand Drive? What do we typically expect on something like that?
Thank you. Through Chairman Sean to Mayor Sean.
Getting a tremendous amount of feedback, sorry.
I will let that settle down. Is this better?
Okay, that's better.
That's better.
Sorry, it must be a mic issue, but that through you Chairman Sean to Mayor Sean. I wouldn't have that specific information available, but what I would tell you is that local roads are not designed, certainly surface treated roads. Are not designed to handle any excessive weight over a long duration. I think that's the real challenge with identifying what damage could be caused by overloading a road. You don't typically see it immediately. It's through the continual pounding of roads. What I can tell you, Mayor Sean, is that we do tar and trip, tar and surface treat on a seven year cycle. So the last time we were in Grandview was twenty thirteen, I believe. So we would be due up shortly here again next year, likely is what we're going to be back in Grandview doing that. So, you know, to to to, I would remind council, it was. To protect the public in a residential area at the time of the truck traffic and the heavy truck prohibition was also. Applied to protect the road network.
Thank you.
Council, any further question? Council McMillan?
Thank you, Chair, through you. Mister Davis, you said that the. Upgrading the bridge to go over that pond would cost thousands or possibly tens of thousands. I think it would probably cost significantly more than that. My question is, even if it costs into six figures, what's what's the value of the whole property?
It's, I mean, obviously, the property itself has value and obviously the plum orchard has value. I I mean, I think it's it's, so, I mean, there's a tremendous amount of value there, but I think what we're, what we're trying to do is. And and again, we're not even sure if that, if upgrading the access would be workable or ultimately permitted by the GRCA. Or any of those sorts of pieces. So those are all moving parts there. I think what we're just trying to do is basically say, look. The Grandview Drive access has been workable for many years and we'd suggest it is still workable. You know, and what we have tried to have with the township is discussions on a wide variety of topics. Just that, you know, frequency of access, when would need to be, when it would need to occur. We've tried as well as you can see on. The Schedule A to our letter outlined the the seasonality or the time of year that the trucks would be used and again, to Mister Poupay's point. He's right that tar and chip roads are not necessarily meant for continual heavy truck traffic. I would submit that that's not the case here. Really, what we're talking about is exceptionally sporadic. Vehicles, sometimes heavier than others, using the road to to access the farm property. Especially during the harvest time, which I don't think would cause damage to the road, but one thing that Mister Preca has indicated is that. You know, if if damages to the road have been caused or or you know, potentially will be caused. I mean, these are all things that we'd be looking at. He's already committed to compensating for the for the the road, any any previous road damage that was caused. But I I think looking forward, I mean, if there are issues in relation to road damage, I think that's an open question and one which we can look at. But ultimately, what we're just trying to do is make sure that the the, again, the sporadic seasonal usage of Grandview Drive. In order to harvest from the plum orchard, that that would be, that that would be protected. And sorry, I see Mister Preca is up. I'm not sure if Mister Preca can answer that question better than I can.
I think that was fairly well stated. I think again, it's not necessarily heavy traffic constant all day long, every day. That's not the intent here.
And again, keep in mind that there was much heavier traffic when it comes to the importation of fill on this property and that's not being contemplated again.
And obviously, just to add, like, I take responsibility for any damages I cause. If it's something that's affecting the community or something that I've done that's going to affect it. Obviously, I'm willing to compensate it and take responsibility for any work.
Yeah, Chair, thank you. Through you a follow up. So my question specifically was about the cost of upgrading the bridge. And and the the cost of that compared to the cost of the property as a whole. Not even taking into consideration revenue from the whole. Obviously, there's costs of doing business. The larger the business, the larger some of these costs are. And and I want to keep this to a question because that's what I'm required to do. So it it's not, it's not the cost that is the prohibiting. Actor on using the Catherine Street Bridge if we don't even know what the cost is. Is that correct?
Well, so let me be clear and I can also let Mister Preca answer this question. I mean. I I I think the, as a business owner, one tends to want to avoid costs. So I think that the cost is probably a factor in that regard, but we're not even sure if it works, like, we're not, like. It, we we question whether the GRCA or anyone else, or we would get the necessary permissions or if even if it's technically possible. To create that access on Catherine Street via the bridge or or anything like that. So in our view, I think it's the sort of initial question of, i- we question its even possibility. But I'm sure the cost and the potential cost will play into a factor, but there it's a, it's a, it's a broader question. Sorry, Mister Preca, if he wants to address it.
Yeah, of course, like, again, like, initially purchased this property, I purchased it with using the current infrastructure that's here. The multiple accesses for agricultural purposes, like the value of the home and the property versus what I'd have to invest additionally to replace this bridge. And go down the path of studies and costs that are unknown or unspecified is something that I would have never purchased this property in the first place. Like, when I planted this orchard, you know, I I got really positive feedback from a lot of the neighbors there bordering our with the property. I didn't see something that, like, you know, like, if you were to ask me before I purchase this property and go about this, if this would be. That I would be like having to, as a, as a challenge within the orchard. It's not something that I considered and the cost for me to to rework the bridge and like, you know, like the. The trucks would be four feet away from my front door, which is not physically possible unless I picked up and moved everything around on my property, which I can't. And I think what we're trying to communicate as well is that. The initially, what in my thought was going to be the easiest solution was to look at the, this north corner of the property. I spoke and we spoke with the region. The region was okay with allowing additional access off of Catherine Street. And I thought that would be something that would be the easiest for everybody. Unfortunately, we weren't able to get the approval or the support that we needed from the regulatory body and hence we're here where we are. So I I maintain that goal here is to use what has been here for many, many years. And the accesses off of Grandview were designed, used since Grandview was constructed. And that's all I'm trying to do is the existing infrastructure that was here with the property when I purchased it. And I do not want to cause disturbance to the neighbors. I don't want to have filled trucks here. And I would like to make it a professional operation where I feel that my neighbors should be welcomed to my property and this is my personal home. So I I know you guys are saying business and things like that, but this is a my home and as well, I want to maintain good relations with my neighbors.
Yeah, thank you, Council Sean. I guess my comments are going to be kind of directed to Mister Poupay. You know, we're a farming community, farms and residents coexist throughout the township. I've lived here all my life and even on Elmira, there's farmland that backs on to residential area. And and those are more traditional farms where you have crops that come certain times of the year. And and you know, that that's dealt with. Is there, is there any other area in Woolish Township that? Has a specific issue like this where the access has been given through a subdivision? Or is this, is this just something that's a unique situation to the township and? And how we deal with it? I wonder if you could just speak a little bit to that.
Through Chairman Sean to Council Merlehan. I'm not aware, make sure my bike's okay before I go further here, but I'm not, I'm not aware of. Other issues that we had, I think that. The real challenge was in twenty eighteen. I think we've talked about what happened there and sort of. How this came to be and and Mister Davis is accurate in that fact that. We do not have site alteration bylaw. That's something that will be presented to council this year. So, you know, that is, that is another tool, I guess I would say in the toolbox that we would have been able to utilize in this case. And that's something that as the township grows and as farmlands do convert. Fill is brought into the township and that's a way that we can protect, you know, our road networks, the safety. We can define accesses. So, you know, it is an unfortunate situation which happened. This is unique, I would say, but it it's, it's, there's other instances where there were accesses contemplated for. Potentially a different use and I would, you could look at this and consider that maybe there was a plan of subdivision at some form. When you had two, you know, one certainly municipal access and then one private residential access off of Grandview to the farm property. So that is not incredibly unusual in Woolwich, but you know, I would say this was a bit of an unfortunate situation here.
Okay, and Mister Davis, when he was speaking, he implied that his services are being retained to protect the access. And this bylaw that the township is proposing, you know, isn't restricting the access to the property. But it is restricting the types of vehicles in that subdivision. Is that, is that correct?
My my apologies. Through you Chairman Sean, so that was directed to to me. I apologize there.
Do you want me to say it over?
I apologize.
Okay, I was, now what was I saying?
Restricting access to the property, the intent, if that's, if I can recall now, the intent is not to restrict access. What we're trying to do is appreciate the agricultural use. We're still protecting the road network and the residential area of Grandview. That was, that's really the intent, but align ourselves better with the Highway Traffic Act. That's the intent of the repealing of the current bylaw with the proposed amendment is really to align ourselves with the Highway Traffic Act better. And do still maintain protection of the road network. So, you know, back to what's being presented for use, there are agricultural vehicles permitted on there. Albeit, a reefer truck wouldn't fall into that. That is too large for that, but certainly the tractors, the trailers, all sorts of things would be. Would be a permitted use.
And then just finally. You know, restricting the type of truck traffic isn't something new in Woolish Township. It it is consistent. Consistently applied throughout different areas of the township. Is that, is that correct? And are there, I know, certain times of years, certain weight of trucks aren't allowed on certain roads within the township. It's, but this isn't. Particularly unique that we are singling out Grandview and like we haven't done before in any other situation, is it?
Through you Chairman Sean to Council Merlehan, I would suggest that the enactment of a heavy truck prohibition bylaw. Would be for those things that we are contemplating here to protection of the road network and and respecting residential areas. You know, Memorial Drive in Elmira is is an example of a heavy truck prohibited, prohibited roadway for that reason as well.
Okay, thank you.
If I could just respond to that, I I'd just like to make a point if I might. Just because I just wanted to correct the record. So, like, when it comes to restricting access. I think the committee member is correct that. So like, when it comes to restricting access, I think the committee member is correct that, um, that the access is not being barricaded off. But I'd suggest that if you prohibit the type of vehicles that are needed to implement the use of land, which is contemplated on that use, one is indirectly restricting, restricting access. If one has a heavy truck prohibition out front of a transport trucking company, I would suggest that that is indirectly restricting access. It's not perhaps putting up a physical barrier in front of that property. But it is in essence, um, creating, uh, restricting access at least to the vehicles that would be contemplated by the duly permitted official plan designation and zoning that has been approved by the township. Um, I, I'd also just sort of suggest that if one looks at the schedule of the traffic and parking by law, which I'd encourage you to do, and look at all of the areas in which heavy truck traffic, um, has been prohibited. Um, this area is in fact unique, um, when it comes to that particular schedule. And all the other areas are much busier, more intense, like dealing with, uh, dealing with different areas. So I'd encourage you to take a look at the heavy truck prohibition schedule of the traffic and parking by law and look at all the other prohibitions. Grandview Drive is a, a bit unique. Um, and I believe, Mr. Handy, there is, uh, another example, I believe in the township of Woolish, where something like this has occurred, where there is actually a subdivision, um, next to a, a farming use. And I believe Mr. Handy is aware of a property in Maryhill, if I'm not mistaken.
But point of order, Chair?
Yeah, yeah.
It was a question from Council Merlehan to staff and the question was answered. The delegation, 10 minutes and, and, uh, it wasn't, it wasn't a question to the delegate.
Okay, my apologies.
Yeah, so do we have more questions for the delegation? If not, we will, uh, we will let them go and we'll continue on. Seeing none? Okay. Thank you. And, uh,
No.
Are there any further, uh, questions or comments to Mr. Poupé? Council Merlehan?
Sorry, not a question, but, uh, um, I'm wondering if Mr. Poupé can just explain what the process is, uh, after this for some of the people that are still online that are concerned of what's going to happen, uh, next.
Sure, through you, um, Chairman Sean to Council Merlehan. And, uh, I would certainly look to, uh, clerks to correct me if I'm, if I'm wrong. But the recommendation here, staff is proposing for committee, is to move this amending by law to the August 11th council date for ratification. Um, it's my understanding that delegations can, uh, sign up to speak on the 11th of August, uh, provided that they bring new information. They cannot rehash, um, of things that have already been spoken of tonight. Um, but they are certainly welcome to come with new information on the 11th for council to, uh, consider at that time before ratifying, uh, or making a decision.
Thank you. Okay. Any other questions? Okay, so council, there's a proposed bylaw in front of you. Do you wish that the clerk could place a bylaw as written in the notice in the next agenda and I need a mover and a secondary?
The, the direction is, council will be to bring the bylaw forward to the August 11th council meeting. That's all their directions.
Yeah. Council Merlehan and Council Redicop, any further discussion? Uh, all in favor? And that's carried. Thank you. Okay, we'll move, uh, unfinished business. We have none. Um, items, uh, for consent. There's one item for approval and no items for information. Um, so do we have a mover or a secondary? Council McMillan and Mayor Sean, any discussion? Council McMillan or Merlehan, sorry?
Thank you. Through you, Cap, Mayor Sean's there. Gotcha. Good one, eh? Um, I'm just, uh, through you to, uh, Clerk Hummel. Um, can you give us, uh, just a quick, uh, reason, I, and, and just a re, a refresh on the summer seeding, uh, beside, uh, kitchen cuttings. Last time it was discussed, uh, I believe, um, it was for a set period of time and that, uh, I think it went till October and then it was supposed to revert back to, uh, laneway, uh, for, for further use and, and that didn't happen. So I'm just wondering if you, if I'm remembering wrong or if something happened.
Here, Sean's, uh, yes, you're, you're not remembering wrong. Uh, we were to do it on a trial basis till about September and then I was to bring it back to council for a look to see if you wanted to continue it. I got delayed on that, no excuse. Um, and then it came down to moving those planters are big and heavy and require a backhoe and fragile, they could possibly break. And they were the, the best thing we had to use to close the alley. And I was a little concerned about reopening it in the fall and then reclosing it in the spring based on cars that have, we, we finally got everybody trained not to try and turn into that alley. So I kept it closed until, uh, council made the final decision and then, uh, picnic tables and everything went out early this year. And then there was some question of what was happening with it. Was it going to stay closed? Was it going to stay open? So I brought it, I brought it back to you with the recommendation that it do continue to be used for the summer seeding area. If that's okay, I haven't been made aware of any complaints about it. Uh, but I may, I would recommend leave it open until such time as staff, likely operations staff tells us that they need that ringway back or we get complaints. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? I'll ask the question. All in favor? And that is passed. Thank you. Staff reports and memos, uh, place to grow amendment number one, before the plan needs methodology, methodology. Uh, Mr. Pong? Pony, Mr. Pong Pony, are you there?
Yes, I mean, uh, excuse me, turn on my video. There we go.
Thanks, Mark.
Um, so this is a, um, an update to places to grow. Uh, the province brought out an update, I believe, about a year or so ago. And this is a further update. Um, and we're required to get comments back to them, um, by the 31st. Um, it's quite typical. We have these, uh, abbreviated timeframes to respond to the province on these planning matters. Um, but really what we're looking at, if you go into background, under, under the province is now proposing amendment number one to places to grow. So this is the first of the amendment. And like I said, it's to try to kind of bring things into alignment with the PPS. But there's a couple of other things in there that are, are, are worth noting on, which is population projections and employment forecasts. Um, the planned horizon's been extended by 10 years. This is not typical, uh, with updates. Um, but also, uh, changes to the mineral aggregate, uh, resources framework that have been dealt, um, that the provinces, um, forcing upon us, I'll say, lack of a better word. Uh, the, also, there's a couple of things related to transit and employment. They created some employment zones, provincially significant employment zones, and we're not part of that. So, and the other thing that they're looking at is some land needs assessment methodology, which we're in the commenting stage in the, on that as well right now. So that hasn't come forward, but it will impact and affect what we do. Um, so basically amendment starts, as I said earlier, changes the planning horizon to 2051 as opposed to 2041. Nothing really surprising there. Um, and the provincial, uh, significantly planted lands, Woolwich doesn't really have any. However, as typical, what you expect with, uh, what's been coming out in the last few years on aggregate, um, is that it's becoming, I'm going to say, more permissive frag aggregate uses to operate. And probably one of the biggest areas you're looking at is, um, I'm going to say section 4.2.8.2. If you look under the report under aggregate change, it talks about habitat of endangered species and threatened species. And this is a fairly significant one. Um, and it replaces, um, habitat, uh, the previous habitat policies. And the concern that we have is that it's not consistent with the PPS. Um, and I can, if I can speak a little bit to, uh, my history of having to deal with some of these aggregate operations. I know the province or sorry, the region, a number of years ago was challenging the province on, on, uh, development and aggregates, uh, agreed in significant areas. The approach was, uh, if they can find a way to reestablish it later on, it's okay. I mean, for anybody else, a developer or anybody else want to do this, you could never do it, but certainly for aggregate, you can do it. And this, um, legislation certainly, I'd say, allows that. The other thing is about with the forecasting for, um, population projections. Um, there's a high and a low end now. Um, and, um, basically it's, it's identifying a range. Um, these things, these numbers that come out and get reviewed every few years. The numbers are always adapted and, and adjusted, but at least it gives you an idea of where you, where you're supposed to head. Um, it used to be a mandate that you had to hit a target. Now there's at least a high and a low range. Um, the forecasting numbers for, for this area really hasn't changed that much. Um, however, they're being viewed as a minimum target. And the idea was that we didn't want, they didn't want municipalities to under-target or be below a target and consistently be that way. But there is some opportunity there for, for fluctuations and this happens just with the economy. As with most provincial documents, this is reviewed every five years. So we'll be at this in five more years to look at some of the targets. Um, the big concern, I think that we've got in this is the land needs assessment methodology. And I think there's some, um, uh, and it's a methodology required to then, it's done to look at the land needs and what's required to accommodate the forecasted growth for both residential and employment. Um, the regional forecast and adopts this and it puts it into the, to the regional official plan. So you can expect that once this is approved, you'll be seeing, uh, ROP amendments coming forward, um, to implement this, which would then require us to do some implementing policies at the local level. Um, there is some concerns, staff has shared the concerns of the region that the recommended, recommendation for the provincial methodology is, uh, has a higher level of detail. It should have a higher level of detail than what's, what is in there now, uh, to get some greater guidance. And that, um, it should really reflect closer to what the language is in the, in the, uh, growth plan. Um, so with that, uh, I, I don't have anything else really I want to highlight on. But I, I would certainly, uh, expect that council would be interested in some of the aggregate policies that would be coming out. So with that, I'll take any questions.
Thank you. Questions? Mayor Sean?
Yeah, are, are we in alignment with the region on all of this or are there places where our opinion differs?
I'd say we're pretty, we're pretty well lined up with them. I, uh, you know, I hate to use this, the term, the temples in the details, but what happens is that when you have policies, they're, they're pretty high level, right? So as it comes down for the province, they mandate that the region implemented through their own OP policy. So some, some of the, what will come out of the region is what we would really be wanting to focus on. Um, to see what the, the details are going to be, like, for instance, population forecasts are, are broader. It's not down to the neighborhood by neighborhood number, but the region will take it to that, uh, uh, another level to get more specific to us, to our, our different community. And we'll have to amend our official plan. So when the regional official plan amendments and policies come forward, we'll have an opportunity to have probably greater input than we would with the province, I'd say. But the province is setting the stage for what the region has to do. And we're, we're pretty well aligned with them.
Thank you.
Council Merlehan?
Oops. Sorry about that. Uh, through you, uh, Council Sean's to, uh, Mr. Pong Pony. Um, the methodology, uh, for the places to grow, uh, that the province is, uh, taking a new tact with and, and change some of the, uh, some of the items. Um, can you talk about what it is they're trying to fix with, uh, with issuing new methodology in, in the, in the various a, uh, areas? Um, and is it, in your opinion, is it, is it to placate, uh, development and growth? Um, and are there, in, in any of the, the methodology changes that you've seen, does any of it create a new benefit for, for residents just living here in Ontario?
Yeah, uh, it's, I'd say it's a tough question to answer. I'd say, um, philosophically, you're seeing a difference of approach on development with the province. There are some things that they are encouraging more. Certainly the aggregate is the obvious one. But the, I need assessments really, or the methodology is really to try to implement what's already in, in the PPS and to line up with it. And what you're trying to see is some efficiencies, but also some, um, uh, I guess more focused growth and, um, some, you didn't, some, some of the, some of the implementations that, that we're coming out with here. They seem a bit disconnected, but some of it is tied back to the community benefit charge and, um, and things like that, a different way of, uh, of, of handling the growth and how we can assess it, which gives us the opportunity to look at, um, tools and, and studies and mechanisms to try to implement some of this stuff. Generally, I'd say that the province is looking at a couple of things. Uh, they're putting more importance on focus provincially significant employment areas as one. Uh, we don't have any of those. Um, however, for the province, there are many of them. There's a, a focus on, greater focus on transit, um, which you're seeing in policies coming down from the province. Uh, and certainly I'd say, uh, inter, intra-regional transit options go would be one. Um, those are higher level ones, but the, the idea is to try to kind of strategize this and recognize that there is some interconnectivity between municipalities and certainly interconnectivity at the provincial, at the regional and the local level. So I'd say, once we start looking, you know, we can implement this through the regional official plan, you'll start to see a little bit more specifics on how that's going to happen. But I'd say there's a, there seems to be an emphasis on efficiency of, of resources. If you look at transit as a resource, it's certainly something that I see as a resource. Traffic and transportation is definitely in my mind a resource. But it's also looking at, um, some improvements on efficiencies and process. What some people think is an efficiency improvement and efficiency of process. If you look at it and you apply that sort of thinking to aggregate, some people say the efficiencies come at a cost, uh, certainly. Um, when you look at aggregates, the potential impacts on, uh, moving municipalities.
Okay, thank you.
And Mayor Sean?
Yeah, thank you. Um, is it, is there any, um, contradiction here? So, so the region has, um, sort of stayed away from being called part of the green belt because our policies are stricter than green belt policies. Does this in any way, um, um, is, is that causing us, uh, any angst with this? So I'm not quite sure how, how to frame this. Um, it, are these changes, um, punishing us because we're not part of the green belt?
I'd say no. Um, we certainly, I'll go back to my days when I was in Brant because we, I dealt with this and I actually wrote a report. Not certain if David remembers it, but there was this initiative to expand the green belt. And I had written a report saying we didn't need to rant because our, our official plan policies were so restrictive that it wasn't necessary to expand the green belt. Certainly, if you look at what the GRCA's influence are, is on official plans and, and zoning bylaws, that's a pretty restrictive, um, and rigorous review that's required to do any sort of those changes. And I think the provincial policy as it is, even with this government, it's still very restrictive to look at any sort of expansion and extensions into some of these, uh, protected areas and, and, and areas beyond settlement. I'd say that the, the regime that's in place now is so, is very strict that, as I think, if I could just use your words, it's not really necessary to put, to expand it into the area. Certainly the province, when they came in, I think they, and I'm recalling by memory, which is sometimes very poor. I think they said that, uh, there was at one time an opportunity where individuals could, could lobby for expansions in the green belt. And certainly in Waterloo region, that was occurring, I think, maybe four or five years ago. I can't remember. But there was a big push to kind of extend that green belt into Waterloo region. The province kind of said, you don't need to do it anymore. And I would say that it's kind of, I don't want to say shut it down, but it's made it very restrictive. So not being in the green belt, I'd say it's not punishing us at all.
Thank you.
Other questions or comments? So we have a, uh, yes. Do we have to read this?
It's best practice.
Okay. But the last sentence there memo Almyra speeding is that that should be part of it.
No.
All right, so that the council of township will which forward report BS twenty three twenty twenty to the provinces, provinces, the township will which comments in response to the environmental registry of Ontario regarding the proposed amendment one to replace the growth growth plan for the greater global worship and proposed land needs assessment methodology methodology for the place to grow growth plan for the greater global worship one. So can I have a mover and a seconder for that? Come to Merlin and the mayor Sean's. Any further discussion? And I'll call it all in favor. That is passed. Thank you. Master licensing agreement with the region of Waterloo and I'll ask Jenna Morris, economic development and tourism officer to provide an overview of her report. Welcome Jenna.
Awesome. Thank you, councillor Sean, and through you to everyone here tonight. So my report covers two patio projects that township staff has been working on in an effort to further support our businesses and in particular in this case, our food establishments. So we have two large patio supporting projects going on, and as everyone knows, many businesses were mandated to close their doors mid March. With food establishments establishments only allowed to open patios outdoors as of June twelfth. So as of most recently, being able to open up some space indoors on July, yeah, on July seventeenth, they're still struggling to get to full capacity to make it make sense for them to have patio. So we've been flexible and we've been helping them put patios or expand patios in places to help increase their capacity. So been working really well for them. But the two particular projects that I'm bringing to you in this report today are, one is a community patio space and a restaurant patio space on one of our streets, Mill Street in downtown Almyra. And the second patio issue I'd like to bring up is an agreement with the region to be able to allow patios on regional roads. So I'll start with the first mention, which is a a community and restaurant patio space on Mill Street. And that one there is it's between the Sip and Bite and TD Bank in downtown Almyra, and half of it is used for Sip and Bite. Half of it is used for community additional community seating space. Mill Street is a one way street. And because the patio space has been put in the entrance of it, we need an amendment to the bylaw to allow for the second portion of Mill Street to go to flow two way traffic. So it is a, it was a huge request from Sip and Bite, and they are very excited to be using that. And the second request for tonight is to enter into an agreement, a master licensing agreement with the region of Waterloo to allow patios on regional roads. So our downtowns tend to typically lay on regional roads, King Street, Arthur Street, Church Street, and the region has proposed, so back stepping a little bit in the interim, they've been working directly with businesses who are eager to get a patio set up in right away. They've been working directly with them, but they would prefer to work with the municipality directly and enter into master licensing agreements so that the municipality can work with the businesses directly to allow them to set up the patio space on a regional road. The sorry, just a minute here. So for the restaurants that are not able to utilize that private property for patio expansions, which we've been working with them directly in the in the past for that is necessary for them to utilize a portion of the road allowance. And in most cases, like I mentioned, these road allowances are on regional roads and are therefore subject to regional approval. And moving forward, the region would like to work with the area municipalities to allow us to issue to issue the patio licenses to further streamline the approvals process. So the region is currently utilizing this arrangement with the cities of Waterloo and Kitchener and the township of Wilmot for their patio programs on regional road allowances. And we've been working together with the regional staff and the staff of other area municipalities as part of the patio group to expedite the drafting of a master agreement and to expedite the approval of patios within road allowances. However, in order to for staff to complete the negotiation of a necessary agreement, and in order to allow us to execute the agreement, the approval of councils required. So in addition to the master licensing agreement, and one of the standard requirements of the agreement is that we have a licensing bylaw in place to govern the licensing process. And as such, a draft bylaw and in a form which is being used by the other area municipalities is attached in the report as attachment B, and it's intentionally basic in form and includes a sunset clause for December thirty first. So it's just part of the the agreement and part of the process for the master licensing agreement. And for the master, this this presentation and for this request here, we would be using the regional patio guidelines, which we've discussed as a group. And moving forward in future phases of reopening, we might look to establish more formal patio guidelines. In particular, for the attachment of Woolwich.
Thank you, Jenna.
So to that, yeah, I was going to just say, I think that's it for now. I don't want to read everything word for word to my report, but if there's any questions from council, I'd be happy to answer them.
Okay, thank you. Question or comments? Council McMillan?
Yeah, just for the benefit of the rest of council. Perhaps Ms. Morris could talk about the BIA had originally planned on the the pop up patios that you see in 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 different cities and they they take up a couple of parking spots. Can you maybe talk us through how we got from that to where we got to the Mill Street situation with with the Sip and Bite? Starting with the BIA putting it out there for all of the businesses in the BIA and and what responses we got and then following through with the third party distributor and how that ended up taking us to where we ended up?
Sure. Through you Chair, to councillor McMillan. So so we worked with the BIA on the Mill Street project. And the original intent and the original approach was working with a company that builds pop up patios. And you can see them, there's pictures, if you were to Google pop up patios, you could see these beautiful looking patio spaces, which are in parking spots. And as you can imagine, there's a, there's a number of municipalities are jumping on this opportunity and they're completely backlogged. But the original intent was for the Almyra BIA to fund some pop up patios to the downtown, to some downtown businesses who may be interested. And in a call out to businesses, Sip and Bite was the only one to respond in a fast manner and and showed interest in in the opportunity. They were they were closed all the way through until this opportunity came across their plate. And then, as I mentioned, in working with the pop up patio group, they are completely backlogged. And as we were talking to them and working with them, it was an at least a three week wait before they could do anything. So we thought, okay, how can we help Sip and Bite set up a patio in the interim? And that's where we are today. I hope that answers what what you were trying to get at there, councillor McMillan.
Yeah, for sure. I think the key point, I think, was the 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 fact that the Sip and Bite was the only business that that gave a response to the call out. I think that's important for council to know. And then I I think hats off to you, to the rest of our staff, and on the speed at which we were able to pivot away from the pop up patio. You know, originally, they were putting out discounts for these pop up patios, trying to entice people to get them. And then shortly after that, we couldn't get an email response from them. They wouldn't answer phone calls, they weren't taking emails, and our staff quickly pivoted from that pop up patio. And and as Morris, you were instrumental in that. And I think there was a lot of staff behind the scenes that that were able to quickly go from what was a small little patio to the project that so yeah, thank you for that background information. I think the fact that the Sip and Bite was the only the only responder. And then our ability as a township staff to to quickly implement something when when Plan A fell through, I think deserves a big, a big thank you from from all of us on council.
Councillor Reddick, did you have your hand up?
So there's a pop up in Stonecrock parking lot. Is this part of the same amendment or and are there any others places in the township like in St. Jacobs that have begun this patio stuff? Jenna, Ms. Morris?
Yes, so through you Chair, to councillor Reddick. So Stonecrock patio is not part of this master licensing agreement because it is on private property. It's in their parking lot, but it is part of the 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 work that the township staff had supported them through to make it happen. So it was definitely part of our support to the food establishments to increase their patio space. But it is different to the request here tonight because it's not on a regional right of way. It's actually in their parking lot.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor Sean? Did you have here?
I was just gonna say thank you to Jenna and to staff for getting us going as quickly as we did. Councillor McMillan articulated that very well. That was my voice again.
Thank you. Councillor Merlin.
Just a suggestion and then a question. I had a resident call about the Mill Street patio, and it wasn't so much the patio as the the sign that's on the on the street. So there's a bunch of pylons that move up, and then there's a sign, and it's really close to the crosswalk. And visibility, seeing anybody that's at, let's say, if you're if you're going south. You can't see if there's somebody at the crosswalk very well, if they're on the TD side of the street. So I don't know if that that sign could get moved back further, like right at the start of where the the turning lane is, just to keep it further away from from the crosswalk, just so visibility for drivers isn't isn't an issue. That would be the suggestion staff can do with it, what you like. I I passed it along. As far as the question goes, I know there's a sunset clause. But like other things I've seen at the township, you know, you start one kind of thing and then it becomes a good idea, and then people want to continue to do it. Is there any discussion at this at this time of what patio system in the township could look like post COVID?
So thanks for the question, councillor Merlin, through you Chair. We're definitely discussing the what it might look at the future or in the future, but we're not there yet. I mean, we are so busy dealing with the requests that are in front of us and making it work. And I think before we got to start suggesting what might what might work, might what might work in future years, we want to just suss out how well the current exceptions are are working.
Okay, and do you have any more patio licenses before you now anywhere in the township? Just curious.
Sorry, can you just be more clear about that, councillor Merlin? What?
Just asking if you're if you're processing any more licenses for other businesses in anywhere else in the township that people have expressed interest?
Do you mean beyond food establishment?
Yeah, anybody who it's open to. Just just curious if if there's more projects in the works.
Yeah, I mean, if if you mean if we're supporting businesses in other ways, yes, definitely. But to be more specific on patios. I'd say most of our food establishments, we've processed an exemption for and or process the application for to expand their patio space or to help them in some way. I know we have six in our downtowns and two just outside of our downtowns. So we've approved with.
Perfect, thank you.
Councillor Martin, did you have a question?
Yeah, I have a few comments. I know, Jenny, you've worked hard. I don't want to throw any cold water on the work you've done. But I really think it's been poorly thought out. Last Friday, in my deliveries, when I go to Mark One, all those places, starting to go to restaurants now again because they're opening, and I come across store patios. And they're all in park lots. And I think the one in Mill Street should be in the park lot off the back. I mean, when you drive into this town and see a whole bunch of pylons to shut off the left hand turn, it looks like you're driving into a construction zone, not even friendly. The people at the bank are happy. I spoke to them. The auto supply is not happy because their trucks have to come in from the back. And they can't turn around. They have to back out. Which is not a good thing to do. And there's a lot of costs from what we've done, and I'm sure the BIA didn't pay for it. I'm sure we have, and I'm not sure why, why we should be paying for moving signs and doing this and shutting the roads down. That's strictly the BIA. If you were in the park lot of the back, you wouldn't have any of those costs. Because when you take the whole thing down, you're gonna have to change the road back to one way and redo everything that you've done. So I just don't think there's been a lot of thought given to it. I like what they've done in St. Jacobs and the Stonecrock, and I think somebody asked a question. Across the road is another patio, I think across the meat and cheese store, but it's on private property. And that's where they should be. I'm not gonna support this business having patios and stuff on region roads. Region roads are meant to drive on. We have, we talked about too much traffic downtown already. So I think we have to give it a better thought. Now, I just gave you my opinion because I wasn't asked for this whole thing was done, and I wouldn't give that. So you've had my comments now.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Councillor Martin, you gotta come sit on the Almyra BIA.
So I make that comment because I'm not sure how the BIA can come up with this suggestion and go to one council member, close the staff, and it falls out and nobody else moved in. Maybe it is. I mean, I may not have got my way, but it would have been nice if I could have commented on it. That's all I'm saying.
Mayor Sean.
Yeah, well, I can I can add that the pandemic control group, which is consists of the mayors and CAOs of all municipalities made a commitment to try and help get businesses up and running as quickly as possible, particularly the food services who who are most directly hit with COVID. And so this was all part of it, but it was part of helping them get some kind of business up and running as quickly as possible. So that's where that all stemmed from. And you're right, things moved quickly. It had to.
Thank you. Councillor Merlin.
The only thing I want to agree with councillor Martin on is the communication with council. Because if, you know, I and I understand things move quickly. I believe this was like three. I believe this was like three or four weeks, you said, was in the works. A quick email to council to say, hey, these are the things that we're working on would have been great. You know, I found out as pylons were, were kind of already set up and everything. So I, I hate when I'm the last one to know in Almira about Almira things. I have people calling me about things, and it's like, I actually don't know what you're talking about. And that's really embarrassing to me. I, I take pride in getting myself educated on council things. So I appreciate a heads up anytime I can get it, and I understand when things don't happen, that's okay. But I think, I think an email was, was warranted. And, you know, everything in Breslar or something is one thing, but in my own community and my own ward, I, I would like to, I would like to be that person that people can call on, and I can give them a straight-up answer. So that's all I will say about that. Thanks.
Councilor McMillan?
You muted again.
Press the button.
I got the wrong way. I, I, I think the concerns are absolutely justified. I think, you know, being on the BIA and not knowing that this was going to be approved until, I think, the, the Friday before pylons went up. And I, I had reached out to Mayor Shontz because we, we had known that the, the approval was being requested. And I think Mayor Shontz sent that email out, letting council know on the Monday after it was kind of finalized on the Friday before it happened. Like, the final approval was for that Friday was the Friday before. Mayor Shontz sent the email to all of us on the Monday. So I, I certainly can understand the concern, and it's not the ideal way to do it. Obviously, we'd like to have this meeting before any pylons go up. But with COVID and, and businesses going out of business, that week could have been, could have been instrumental to, to the Sippin Bite. So I, I, I get the concern, but the, the email did go out, you know, the Monday before, before the cones went up on the Friday.
So, yeah, I, I mean, appreciate the feedback from council. I can't recall the exact timing, but I know distinctly that Jenna did send around an email to council to give them a heads up. I thought that was in advance of the pylons, but our apologies if it was not from that standpoint. Point taken, as, as been noted. But I do know at a staff level, there was a discussion to make sure that an email did go out to council to outline the situation. I just can't recall this evening the timing. But certainly, if that's an area that we can improve at in terms of the timing, the, I can assure you, the whole notion from staff was that all members of council needed to be apprised and also apprised of the unusual circumstances because of hopefully being able to help a business in advance of our regular schedule and not having to have a special, a special meeting just for this purpose. A point taken. There may have been an issue with respect to the timing. I just can't remember when that email went out to all, all council.
Just quick clarification. I was speaking, I mean, in this particular incident, incident, I found out from Jenna's email. I don't recall an email from Mayor Shontz, but I wouldn't say anything if this was a one-off thing. This has happened in other areas where construction things go up, and I've talked to staff over the years. And, you know, things drop off and whatever. I get it. I get I'm not like the, you know, we make sure Councilor Merlin knows everything. I, I understand it's not that kind of a priority. I just appreciate when I do get that heads up and, and even some kind of input as a councillor in my own ward. It would be, it would be nice to, to be asked for my opinion. But, you know, I get, I get we're gonna help out businesses and, and everything that staff is doing to help out businesses. I, I appreciate that. Thank you for all the work that you're doing on behalf of, of the businesses. And, and so that wasn't a shot across the bow on this particular incident. But just know that things that go on in the community, the councillors, you know, we represent the people here, and we want to be able to know what's happening before it's generally publicly known. That's all. Thanks.
I do have a question about the details here. Do we have any more regional roads that we would be looking at closing? Trying to think of where anything like that might happen. Do you have any, any idea? Jenna?
Thanks for the question, Councilor Shontz. So we're not looking at closing any regional roads. We're just looking at being able to approve patio applications on regional right-of-ways. It would likely be parking spaces or any, I'll just leave it as regional right-of-ways because we have to see what applications come before us. But it would not be closing a road. It would be King Street or Arthur Street, I would say, you're most likely to see them for.
Yeah, okay, thank you. Any further discussion or Councilor Martin?
Thank you. And please don't get me wrong. I'm not opposed to outdoor patios. I'm concerned that you're right. If I showed you the patio that I saw last week, you wouldn't even think of going to Mill Street. I mean, they had tents up, done really well. And invite, I don't see anything inviting in Mill Street. Why would go down there? And just the other thing is, I'm not sure when they're open. When I came through at nine and five o'clock, I expected to see people there. The chairs were all turned over. It wasn't even open. And I've gone by there several times during the day, and only seen one table being used. So I'm really not sure how successful it's been. But I think if you got the park lot at the back and had a nice tent up and a few other things, you could make it look very inviting to people. And I think that's what we should have done.
So we have a motion before us that the mayor and clerk be authorized to enter into a master licensing agreement with the reach of Waterloo, and that in order to expedite and streamline the approvals process, the temporary patios within the regional road allow the implementation and administration of the master licensing agreement delegated to economic development and infrastructure services through the special event permit process. And that council approves the patio bylaw in accordance with the approved regional municipality of Waterloo master licensing agreement, and that council approves the Mill Street traffic and parking bylaw amendment. So I need a mover and a seconder for that. Councilor McMillan and Mayor Shontz, any further discussion? Call in favor? And that is, oh, I need opposed. Sorry. Okay. And that's passed. Thank you. Budget development report. Mr. Kunderik, are you still with us?
I am. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So by, by way of some opening comments, so with our local provincial Canadian economy so starting to recover from the coronavirus, I would probably say it's safe to say that 2021 will probably prove to be the most challenging budget year we're gonna face in our lifetime. There are so many unknowns at this time, and specifically for us, there's a lot of unknowns with regards to our recreation. Programs are gonna go and enter in the recreation revenues. So when we look into the 2021, council asked for staff to bring back report so that we can have a discussion on next year's budget before staff started to draft it. So we are just at the beginning stages right now of drafting that, and we're seeking council's direction at this point. And this direction will help guide and shape the draft 2021 budget that will be released later this year. So there are several recommendations in this report that is meant to prompt and guide tonight's discussion. In particular, staff are looking for direction on the tax rate increase target for 2021, whether council wishes to continue to add to the infrastructure levy, as well as add to the climate action, creating infrastructure levy, as well as direction on the new assessment growth and any other initiatives that council may want to see in the draft 2021 budget. It is my hope that tonight we can have a healthy and meaningful debate. I also would like to point out that any of the directions that council may give tonight does not mean that it's gonna seal the fate of the 2021 budget. This is just direction, and council can obviously change their mind as we get into it. Because as I said earlier, there's a lot of things that are in order at this time, and there's a lot of changes that could happen. So at this time, just looking for council's input, this is your opportunity to give us direction as staff and what you'd like to see in the draft 2021 budget. So at that, I will open it up for council's questions and look forward to tonight's debate.
Okay, thank you. Council? Wow, that was fast. Mayor Shontz?
One thing I'd like to see us do is move toward taking the Waterloo North Hydro allotment out of the operating budget and applying it more to our reserve fund, just because of the fluctuations that we're starting to see with the revenue in Hawaii North Hydro and sort of keep us out of trouble that way. I'm not sure how you would go about doing that. I mean, we would still have the same dollars coming in, but it would just position it in a different place. Do you have any comments on that?
Yeah, through you, Mr. Chairman. So the, the only thing that is for certain with Waterloo North Hydro is the junior interest bracket. That's about $130,000 or $152,000 per year. So the dividends do fluctuate, and I think that's where we've seen the fluctuations over the years. Naturally, Hydro goes through a rate review every like three, four, or five years. I'm, I'm trying to remember how, how often it happens. But that rate is static at that time, and then, of course, what happens is you see your dividend start to go down over the, the years. I think we're gonna be facing a challenge in 2021, given that I'm pretty sure our dividend for that time period is gonna go down. So we will probably see less dividend in 2021 than we actually are seeing or have seen in 2020. I think this is something that I've heard from council before. I think Councilor Merlin has mentioned it about that initiative, taking stuff from Waterloo North Hydro, the money that we get, and start putting it into reserve. We can start to do that in 2021. It may not necessarily be the, the right year to do it because I think we're gonna see a decrease in our dividend in 2021. But as they go through the, the next filing, which I believe they're just starting to do that right now, we'll see that bump up again in the, and, and the dividends, and that may be a good time to do it. So maybe 2022 may be a good time for us to start, you know, maybe taking $50,000 every year and starting to put that into a separate reserve. But once again, council's direction, we will, we will follow whatever council wishes.
Councilor Redicop?
Yeah, I, in my ward, there's been no negative feedback to having an infrastructure levy or the green levy. So I would, I would encourage us to continue to do that, at least for the next year if possible.
Councilor Martin?
Thank you. Through you Richard, the 1.8 that you're proposing, is that what you need to deliver a budget? Or is that the amount that you can get away with? I shouldn't ask that.
Yeah, so through you, Mr. Chairman. I, I would say, from what I hear from, from staff, is obviously budgets are never enough. We can, we can never do what we'd like to do. But I mean, obviously, we're faced with fiscal realities, you know. And I think the challenge we're gonna have is right now, we are just at least trying to keep up with inflation, you know. And as we bring these budget development reports, we are looking at what the experts are. So the economists, what they think is gonna happen to inflation in, in 2021. You know, so they're predicting, I think it was whenever between two and like 1.6, so we went with 1.8. You know, I, I think for us, it's gonna help us with some of the challenges we're gonna have because, you know, as the Consumer Price Index indicates, its prices go up. So naturally, the, the amount of money that we need to buy services or to buy products, and that actually goes up as well. That means our budgets need to go up in order to at least maintain that service level we're delivering. So not quite probably answering your, your question directly. But I think for us, it's to start looking at CPI. It's just a start for us. It's not necessarily saying it's gonna be the magic pill that's gonna help us, but, but it's, it's something that we look forward to having a debate with council of where we're gonna land on that.
Anyone else? Councilor McMillan?
Thank you through you. My, my concern is our reserves were, how would you describe the state of our reserves during the last budget season?
So through you. So, we finished, Councilor McMillan?
I'll have a follow-up, I'm sure.
Sure. My apologies if I interrupted you. Through you, Mr. Chairman. So the state of our summer reserves, it was a challenge. You know, as we know, one of the challenges we had was with our operating contingency reserve. You know, and we've drawn upon that for several things, including in the past couple of years, we were drawing upon it for our deficits that we experienced both in 2019 and 2018. Those were the operating deficits. We have about $130,000 right now in that reserve that is uncommitted. We do have another reserve that we can start to, to tap in if we, we need to, but we would need to have council's permission to start basically shifting money around. Some of our reserves are in decent shape, but some of them, you know, a good example is the infrastructure reserve fund. You know, we have the great initiative that we have with the infrastructure levy. The problem that we have is as soon as we put the money into that reserve fund, we pretty much take the whole thing out in, in that, that budget year. So that at times gets to be challenged from a planning perspective, to be able to utilize that in years going forward. But that just goes to show you the need from our, our infrastructure. We are just in constant need for replacement and renewal of our infrastructure. I would say, though, that we always have a big balance because what some of the, I would say the financial people would say is supposed to be a true healthy balance or reserve fund may be quite different than what a resident would think as what you would be as a healthy reserve fund. Give a case in point, you know, we have a water wastewater reserve fund. Sometimes those, those numbers can get quite large into the millions of dollars, but they're for very specific purposes. And sometimes we actually, you know, have to build that up because we have big projects that are gonna happen two, three, four years down the, down the road, and that's why we're building it up. So in a point in time, so many may say, you guys have a lot of money. But we may look at it and say, we know what's coming down, down the horizon, and we'd say, we actually, we don't. So not quite, once again, answering your, your question directly, Councilor McMillan. I think you just dropped off on us. But, but essentially, to the rest of council, our reserves and reserve funds do at times have challenges. It just depends on which reserve, reserve fund we're talking about.
Thank you. I think you scared them.
I honestly didn't mean to, Mr. Chairman. I honestly didn't mean to.
Anyone else? Councilor McMillan?
Seriously, come on. Okay, I need the name tag.
Patrick.
Okay, so I guess here's where some debate can happen. Because, you know, right off the start of this meeting, when we were going through the KPMG stuff, Mr. Patrick noted that 2020, we're gonna end with a deficit, for sure. So we're already starting behind the eight ball. It's gonna be our most challenging year, he just said at the beginning of this. And he mentioned experts when it, when he talked about, you know, this CPI and inflation. But there, we're in times that are unprecedented. We don't know what's gonna happen. And, you know, I watch too much news and too many epidemiologists, you know, and, and, and back science to understand, we're not done this pandemic. We're not over. We won't be over for entire 2021. Life is not back to normal, and I don't think we have, we can approach this year's budget as anything but normal. So when we are looking at 2021, well, when I'm looking at 2021, I, I say we can't go business as usual. I, I would suggest that we pause, we put a pause on the infrastructure levy this year, and I'm a huge supporter. I I would suggest that we pause, we put a pause on the infrastructure levy this year, and I'm a huge supporter. I think it's a great program, and it's something the township needs, but I think we need to put a pause on that this year. We need to put a pause on the green infrastructure fund this year, a one year pause. We don't know what's going to happen, and we do know that it's not nice life as normal. And as this progresses, as businesses are all, you know, they're not all the way back to business, business is not as usual for any, well, some people are doing well. A lot of people are definitely way under their numbers from previous years. It's a challenge, and that it's a challenge for a lot of people that won't be going back to work, that have lost their jobs permanently. So our approach, I think, is going to have to be completely different. And I think we have, you know, I think the projects, when we look at the infrastructure levy, you know, ever since I've been on council, every project that, you know, staff has all the best intentions of making these projects work. And yes, we have all the stuff in place, and something happens, always happens. We have a lot of projects that didn't go forward last year, projects that aren't going forward this year. And we seem to be playing catch up every year. So I think a pause on the infrastructure levy, it still generates over a million dollars for the township just as a pause. So it's not like we're abandoning the infrastructure levy. I just don't think we need to increase it and and add undue stress on 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 residents this year. Anywhere where we can pause hiring, keep staff to a minimum, because you know, when when they talk about flu season coming in the winter and second comings of of COVID, it scares the bejeebers out of me, because I would hate for the economy to have to shut down. And if we if we approach this year, like, yeah, we're going to have all these projects going and all that kind of stuff. I mean, it might put us behind for one year in some of the infrastructure projects. But I say we keep as much money, build up reserves this year, look at look at the long term a little bit, and the projects that we do get staff to focus on are ones the planning, the 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 think stuff, the the getting them to use their professional resources and in direction, you know, we we work on that strategic plan. You know, we focus on on a couple of core projects and 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 move forward. I I believe that's the approach we need to take this year. It has to be different. It can't be just go run down the numbers and going, yep, 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 and yeah, we need this for this, but maintain what we have and 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 give some relief to residents this year. If there was ever a year, this is the year that we need to do it, we need to do it different. You know, we we talk about this patio thing and doing things different and and all that kind of stuff. We have to take that same approach. We, you know, in in businesses, they everyone pivoted so quickly, you saw all these curbside takeout and all that, because you do that, because it's you're desperate, you need to, you need to maintain the business. We have to, we have to take a completely different approach, takes all of us to think about, how do we do this differently? How do we get the best value for residents? What kinds of things did we do? Have we just always done this way? And how can we can do it differently? Because everybody out there has proven that they can do business differently. My own business, we shut our doors to the public and to keep our staff safe, to keep people out, they can, we can can continue to do business just fine on the phone and email and all that kind of stuff. And it it's been great. And I've talked to other businesses that, you know, have done similar practices, and they're actually way more productive. So not being bothered, you know, not bothered, I don't want to say that. But but when so much other work can be done differently, we have to think differently. So I would appreciate, you know, guys might all not agree with any of the stuff that I just said. But you have to be able to agree that we can do things differently. We don't have to do it like we've always done it. Because every small business out there has proven that you can do it differently. And I would like us to see that approach and 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 look at all the different aspects of our of our municipality. And how can we do it better just moving forward? This is the year to do it. We got to step up. And I'm really kind of sick of going through more budget things, doing the same old thing, and all we're doing is looking for pennies here and there, and it's kind of a waste of our time. So this is the year. We're going to rise up to the challenge, and we're going to, we're going to offer something different to the residents. There's my pitch.
Anyone else? God.
I I apologize, I didn't hear the end of Mr. Patrick's answer there, but I'll fill in the blanks myself. So our 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 reserve was in a bad spot to begin with. And then we got into this year where everything, everything hit the fan, and we had to be forced to be in a position where we're drawing on reserves. I I think I I I agree with Council Merlin, and we got to do everything different. But I think I would disagree with how we do everything differently. If we if we just say, you know what, we're going to, we're not going to do a two percent levy increase across the board, and we're going to give everybody that, you know, thirty dollars a year on their property tax is a break. There's going to be people like me that get a thirty dollar break that don't need it. And then there'll be other people who are so impacted by it that thirty dollars is it's a it's a spit in the ocean. It doesn't do anything for them. So I I think I would like to kind of see us take a everything's different approach, but realize that we we can be more surgical with how we help people. And I would like us to to say, you know, what services are absolutely necessary? What services, you know, can we put a six month hiatus on, a twelve month hiatus on while we get through this global pandemic? And then how can we help the people in our community that need the most help? And and how do we stand that? You know, the likelihood of this happening again is getting higher not lower. And and, you know, if if we are coming out the other side of this, if there is a vaccine in early twenty twenty one, you know, we got off, we got off a little lucky, and we also got off because the provincial government, the federal government have mortgaged the next years for us. We can't go back to that. Well, we we might need something, you know, if this were happened to happen again. So I could get on board with putting a delay on the infrastructure levy. But I would like to see that stay in and just move into a reserve levy for one year. So that if we were to shut down again, we have that money from, you know, the reserve levy that could fund us through, you know, the second wave or or the next global pandemic. So I would be on board with saying, you know what, our our infrastructure levy levy is extremely important. We lose tax revenue for three months, you know, that's more important. I would be on board with us saying, let's divert the one and a half percent infrastructure levy for one year. Let's divert the half a percent climate action change, green infrastructure levy. But rather than giving everybody thirty dollars back, I would say, let's funnel that into reserves and and wait for the next global pandemic, because if it's not the second wave, if it's not the first wave, you know, it's coming. The the likelihood of another global calamity is getting higher, not lower. So I I would say let's build up our reserves and get to the point where we have a little bit more flexibility than what we had coming into this one.
Thank you. Mayor Shotts.
So would you would you look at strictly the increase, the one point five and the point five? Or would you look at that whole dollar figure that is now going into infrastructure? And and need up the reserves that are depleted for this year instead of doing infrastructure?
Was that a question to me?
Yeah.
Yeah. So I I kind of felt like Counselor Merle Hand was saying, let's leave the infrastructure budget where it is and not just add the one and a half percent. I was going along with that, that leave the infrastructure budget where it is. And then just the one and a half percent increase for one year diverted into a reserve fund so that we have a little bit of flexibility if, you know, we have to close up our offices for three months again.
So if I can, if I can respond to that and ask the question to council, and and I'm just blue sky here, what would you think of taking some of that infrastructure money? I I know we've always put it out as being for infrastructure, but what would you think of of using that for for, you know, beaming up our our operating reserves or some of those reserves? What what does council think of that? I'm not sure what I think of it, so I'm I'm just throwing it out there.
Yes, Scott.
I even suggest, you know, if if we did the one and a half percent infrastructure levy, we it could still be an infrastructure levy, but I mean, we'd have to rename it, but just don't spend that infrastructure money for a year. That is going into a global calamity reserve that could be diverted after twelve months in back into the infrastructure levy. I do think at some point, we have to address our reserves. You know, we are, we've been playing fast and loose with how much money we have in reserve. And it if it didn't hurt us this time, because Counsel Merlin's right, we're not through this. If it didn't hurt us this time, we should learn the lesson of how close it came hurting us, not having a proper reserve. So I think at some point, we do have to address that. But I don't know if increasing taxes, you know, as much as we can, pushing the limit during a pandemic is the right thing. So maybe we use that one and a half percent, and we just earmark it for infrastructure spending or, you know, pandemic emergency spending. And if that doesn't happen in twelve months, then it does go on to the infrastructure budget, you know, twelve months from now or twenty four months from now. So we could, it it could be a bit of both.
Yeah. Through you, just the comment on the infrastructure levy. I don't want to monkey with that fund. I know that money is earmarked specifically for infrastructure. And it's, you know, I think everyone can attest, it's an easy sell. When people go, hey, why did my taxes go up? And then you say, well, actually, we did this, and and it goes towards roads and all that kind of stuff. So I don't want to monkey that. I just want to, I just want to press pause. It's still, it's still over a million dollars. That can go to, I mean, we have infrastructure projects, lots of them that will need that. I'm thinking burn swallow. Oh, boy, we have, well, we've passed a whole bunch of engineering things in the next couple of years for for projects. So, you know, I don't have the answer to how we do things different. I don't know the business as well as staff. But I I think as far as direction that I'd like council to give staff is, you know, let's get out of our comfort zone a little bit and see what's possible when we just look at the numbers differently. And we look at how we run the business differently. And and we we take an example from the businesses in our own community of what they've done differently to deliver services. And I mean, we do have services that, you know, we have that are dedicated, like staff time to to do occasional services. And, you know, maybe this is the year that we go, hey, let's press pause on on those services. And and maybe it's a service that isn't really needed in the community to to the degree that some other services are. You know, even we can look at the grant money program that we have, like fifty thousand dollars approximately that that goes to grants. You know, some of the groups maybe aren't going to be operational next year and and won't meet them, but maybe we press pause on some of those things, or we just we give money to Woolwich Community Services and Community Care Concepts and and those direct that that deal direct with them. We give them a little bit more out of that or something. But just taking a look at where we spend money and then go, hey, do we actually need to spend this money? Is this something that can be diverted? I don't have the answers to any of this stuff, and and I I probably like to hear from Mr. Patrick about the reserves, because while I recall us talking about reserves, I don't know if we were talking about them being in desperate measures. And I just could have missed that that, but I I thought we were fairly healthy healthy in some areas of reserves, and I understand that the reserves in one pot have to go to specific things and items and that are accounted for. So anyway, that that's more of the gist. I mean, I don't think we're not going to answer any of these questions tonight. But I think I think the attitude or the approach, I guess, to the to the twenty twenty one budget, I think it just needs to be different. And I don't I can't define different right now. I just think it needs to be different.
Mr. Brennan. So I I'm actually going to take a shot at defining different. Actually, what I'm what I'm hearing from council is, you know, as for other years, difficulty with setting a target, especially in this year of all years, where we're in a global pandemic. But what I hear, whether it's Counsel Merle Hand or Counsel McMillan or Mayor Shotts, those that have spoke, you know, so far, what I'm hearing is consistent with what we've had to do this year as a staff and a council. We have had to look at things different. You know, we can expect potentially that our revenues will be down. What can be deferred? What can be put off? So I would respectfully say, what I'm hearing council say is, look at things different in the sense of, look at how you've looked at things this year. You've had to look at them differently. In fact, we had to react quickly in terms of depleting revenues. And and we brought forward a bu- budget mitigation and budget containment. To me, what I'm getting a sense of and happy to hear if that's off base. But part of being different is this year, we did have to look at depleted revenues and what that meant in terms of typically deferred or or the need to typically defer services, programs, and projects that we normally would have proceeded with. It can't be business as usual. It needs to be that difference, and it needs to be more of a mitigation and containment. What what do we absolutely need to do to be able to, you know, provide the appropriate level of services and programs? At the same time, what can we defer and put off? So that we recognize that, like many in the world, that COVID nineteen is at least a two year situation. If we have anything to learn from history with the Spanish flu, it's a minimum of two years from that standpoint. So being in fiscal mitigation or budget containment, I think is part, at least of of how we attack this upcoming year. And I I think that's the approach that will be helpful, and I think Richard would agree. You know, and I know going into this, what he said at senior management was at the very least, what he hopes for is a very fruitful discussion from council. And I think we've certainly had that this evening in terms of providing direction that things need to be different in terms of our approach.
Yeah, and and I I think, Mr. Brennan, you you captured what I was thinking pretty perfectly, especially the two year thing, you know. I I think that that's incredibly intelligent vision to have coming into this. I would also really like to be strategic and surgical with the relief that we provide. So I really like the fact that in the first two months of this, we said, if you can't pay your property tax, don't worry about it. We're not going to punish you for being late. You get a free deferral. And it was a few months after that that we said, you know, we we can't have that. We can't have that blanket approach anymore, but still, if you can't pay your property tax, here's an application, we're going to work with you, and we're going to make sure that you don't lose your house, because you couldn't pay your property tax. I would love to see us as a township be able to continue that type of approach, where we can have a huge impact for the for the people who need it, as opposed to having a very, very small impact for everybody. And we're going to capture a lot of people who don't need it. So, you know, So, you know, diverting funds is one thing, you know, if we're looking at, you know, let's let's slash the budget and and give all the savings across the board equally, everybody. I I I'm not in favor of that because I think we're gonna miss a lot of people who need more help. And we're gonna help people who don't need that help. So I'd be, I'd be really in favor of maintaining a program where there was uh, you know, an application based. Property tax forgiveness, utilities forgiveness, um, and and finding ways to sacrifice to be able to make that happen. Um, so that the people in our community who need the most help get the most help.
Thank you.
Sorry, I just, I just wanted to talk about the the tax relief uh. You know, uh, and and I, I think by saying it's just an extra thirty dollars kind of minimizes what the tax impact is on. On people, that's usually what gets advertised is, uh, you know, taxes went up uh thirty dollars on a house that's worth like three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Um, there's not too many houses that are three hundred and fifty thousand uh. Uh, dollars in in the township. So when you, you know, you're you're maximizing that, you're 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 multiplying that thirty dollars on a. You know, a seven hundred thousand dollar house. I don't know what the averages in Almira, but all the homes going up, townhomes are now like five hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Um, so um, the thirty dollars, I think, is minimizing that impact. And, you know, I I'll ask Richard again for this budget year to to show uh a graph of of ten years. Uh, every ten years, our taxes, uh, property taxes double. Um, you know, that that thirty dollars adds up and it's not just the thirty dollars of the township. It's the the next sixty dollars at uh Warrly Region and then the province on top of that. It's a, it's 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 a lot of taxes. And this year, I just, I just think we need to, uh, we need to model um. The behavior of, you know, that that we need to, you know, set our priorities of 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 what's important here, looking after the people here. Um, and and right now, I mean, even if you look at what we did for uh letting people defer their taxes. I I think it's a fairly small percentage of people that that took up that offer. Uh, who knows that that may, that may become different uh as as things continue to go and uh people's savings are eaten up or or whatever. Um, but I I really didn't want to let it go that, you know. You think that, you know, our our one point six percent increase is only a matter of thirty dollars. Because it's it's significantly more than that and it compounds over the years. It's easy to keep adding two percent and next thing you know, you're you're as a resident, you're you're going, hey, what uh what did I get for uh for all this money? And 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 it, I I just didn't want that minimization to uh to go unsaid.
Hold on, Scott, uh, Mayor Schatz, you wanted to.
Yeah, thanks. Um, I I wanted to ask uh Richard to just clarify something because. Um, Pat was talking about a thousand dollars on an average house, so I just wonder if you could. Just explain where that average house um amount comes from. And does it really matter what it is and it's consistent all the way across for like an impact thing or?
Yeah, so you missed a term. And so so what it is, is you're looking at what we have in our residential class. So the total value of uh what we have as our residential assessment. And you divide that by the number of residential properties. That's where the average comes from. I think we're in around the high, almost just low, uh, where the high three hundreds, just almost four hundred thousand dollars is our is our average in in Woolwich itself. Um, you know, but to a certain point, when we talk about houses that are selling for, you know, five hundred, six hundred thousand dollars. Those are market values, don't necessarily reflect into what the assessment value is because assessments are always up to four years behind what the market value is. And then it just becomes relative. Um, so so I think for us, you know, when we look at, you know, three hundred or thirty dollars for the, yeah, I think it was. Three hundred and ninety thousand dollar uh assessment uh in twenty twenty. Um, you know, it is, it is relative because I think to Councilor Merlehand's point, there are certain residences that are. Even the assessed value is greater than than that. So it does have an impact. Uh, the higher the assessment is, it definitely has an impact. I think for us, we're just trying to demonstrate when we present this to council, what an average would look like. You know, we don't want to turn around and say, well, if you had this, it's this, we had this, you you had this. I think we're just trying to present something that sort of looks like uh what an average is. And and once again. Average in Almira is going to be different than an average in St. Jacob's, a different than average in Brussels, so.
Thank you. Scott.
Take it chair through you. Yeah, I I wanted to talk about appraised value versus market value. And and also, I'm not minimizing thirty dollars and the impact of compounding additions over time. My only point is, if you can't pay your property tax an extra thir- you know, thirty dollars. If if you can't pay the the thousand dollars that you owe, it's not going to help you if it's nine hundred and seventy that you owe instead of a thousand. Um, and and for me, if I got thirty dollars um off of my property tax, it's not going to change anything for me. So just being more surgical, certainly not minimizing the impact of compounding additions over time. Um, but just, can we be more surgical with our approach like we were for the first two months? Like we became with the with the application for deferred property tax after focusing on the people who need it the most. Having money to help businesses, you know, small businesses, retail businesses that need it more than, you know, people who. Public sector jobs or or me in the financial service industry, um, we don't need the help. There are other people that need a lot of help.
Thank you. Okay, since everybody else is having their say, I'm gonna throw in a few comments as well. And I have to agree with what Pat is saying that we're gonna have to tighten our belt. Um, as a country, as a as a province, we're mortgaging our grandkids and great-grandkids. Um, you know, and and putting them in debt. So I think we have to look at our own uh expenses as well. I think we have to be really hard uh as to what what we're gonna offer next year. And uh, and if it means cutting some some things that uh, you know, that people want. Um, versus what we need, I think we have to look at our needs rather than our wants uh in the next year or two going ahead. And I think we really have to um isolate what, you know, where we're spending our money and uh. And, you know, take care of our needs first. And then then if we've got money left over, maybe that can go toward their wants. And as harsh as it is, that probably means that the uh, that the rec uh budget is gonna have to really be looked at. Because those, as far as I'm concerned, are probably a lot more wants than they are needs. And uh, you know, I I think that's what we have to look at. So I I have to um. Agree with what Pat has been talking about, that we really have to um change, change our our uh attitude when it comes to the budget issues. Those are my comments. Um, I I don't want to um prolong this discussion. I think we've got a lot of uh feedback that, I don't know. Hopefully, Richard can go back and and um, you know. Flesh it out a little bit more and and uh, if there's anything else you need, Richard, or can, or is that, did not?
So through Mr. Chairman, I think what I heard from um, I would say a good majority council so far is to. Uh, defer adding the infrastructure levy as well as a climate action grinning levy. I've I've heard that discussion. Um, those are really still easy things for us to to add in, to take out, you know, on the fly when we get into budget deliberation. So we can leave them out for now. Um, and then if council, as we go through the twenty twenty-one deliberations, want to add that in, I mean, it's it's going to our reserve fund. Uh, so it's easy to kind of add add back in from that perspective. Um, I think one of the other things that I keep hearing um is with regards to, you know, tightening our belts. Um, looking for ways of of how we do service delivery. I think the challenge that we're going to have as we get into the twenty twenty-one budget, you know, and specifically when we look at some of the lost revenues we may be facing in twenty twenty-one. Is, are there services that council deems? Do not touch those services? Or are there other services? And to your point, uh, councillor Sean, you talked about recreation, maybe an area that 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 we may need to explore. On what services we do offer. And I think that's a question I'm going to pose to council is, is are there services you can think of right now? And it may be kind of unfair at this hour, um, to say, don't touch, or I'm okay if you don't do this. Because I think from a staff perspective, that's going to help us shape the twenty twenty-one budget, knowing what council's um thought process is and some of the service deliveries. Because if we don't start to um, you know, be mindful about what we're doing with our budget, we're gonna have a service level impact. And then what is that service level impact that council is willing to accept? And then in turn, what is the community willing to accept?
Well, I think uh where I was coming from is um, you know, something as simple as uh doing the uh playgrounds and stuff like that. Uh, you know, a lot of those we look at because of uh of liability. And, you know, maybe we just have to look at putting that off for another year or two. Uh, and, you know, and accept the liability as it is. And uh, you know, chances are, um, hopefully that nothing's gonna happen and and, you know, things like that. And those, you know, that's, we're talking hundreds of thousands of dollars in some cases there. So, you know, that's that's a. That's an area where we could, we could hold back. We're not cutting any services. But uh, you know, we're just not, you know, coming out with the latest and greatest and, you know, things like that. So that that was, you know, where I was going with that. Scott.
Yeah, thank you, Chair, through you. One of the things that I think is becoming clearer and clearer is that spending time outside uh is not um. Is not increasing the risk of passing this virus from person to person. So I think one of the things that would be on my do not touch list is like trail maintenance, if we can keep. If we can keep trails open, if we can keep outdoor space open. Um, but I would agree with with councillor Sean's where, you know, let's let people spend time outside. But maybe we don't need to upgrade the ball diamond lights, but you know, it doesn't have to be the ball diamond that gets it. But um, you know, trails, outdoor space, you know, open green space. If we can encourage people and allow people to spend time outside, um, that's going to, it's gonna really help our community. So that would be something that would be on my, you know, do not touch list. Anything that encourages outside recreation short of, you know, hard infrastructure that costs a lot of money. Uh, you know, I I don't think the bang for the buck is necessarily there this year. Ball diamond lighting, ball diamond fencing, that kind of stuff, but but outdoor playground, outdoor park space, outdoor trails. Anything that gets people outside more, I think it's is good for us.
Anybody else? Pat, sorry, sorry, Ken.
Um, I know in the last year's budget, uh, this is just general comment. And uh, the clerks department, the computers and everything, we talked about life cycle of replacement of computers at being only four years. Um, I think I, at the time, I argued that that was far too uh quick to recycle those computers at uh at four years. Uh, my own computer here, which is in heavily, heavily used, uh, is going on six years now. And it's working just fine on using uh intense uh intense graphic uh applications. Uh, more so than probably what a lot of uh computers be used at the township. So areas like that, these projects where we're doing backups on backups on backups uh with servers and everything. Uh, you know, it's incredible how much money we spend uh from year to year on licenses and and so, and I get it, I get this, you know. You you've got to be mindful of all that kind of stuff, but I, you know, it was a couple of years ago, we had a contract that was, you know, there was warranties built in with millions of dollars for the backup. And it was like, oh, great, we're all covered. And but, oh, no, there's been two more other backup servers since that that project. So I think uh, I think we could uh press pause on on uh more computer stuff, uh focus on on uh. You know, the the maintenance of our computers, the IT system as people do more remote meetings, uh, you know, support. Support those initiatives. Um, as far as do not touch. I, I can't think of anything. I think everything should be on the table that you you staff can go. Is there any possible way of doing this a different way or not at all? And and so I I leave that much to staff uh. That's all I got. I'm tired. Are we almost done? It's time for bed.
Yeah, I don't, um, I I don't have a problem with looking at certain pieces of infrastructure and and maybe delaying them by a year. Um, but I have two, two cautions. One is uh when you start delaying infrastructure. Technical playgrounds and that kind of thing. And and I I I agree, we can, you know, there are places where we can do that. But you also want to be really careful not to get too far behind or, you know. It it's like our roads, you know, when they say to maintain them rather than, you know, letting them fall completely apart is a process more so. So I think there's a balance there that we need to to be cognizant of as we're doing some of that um picking around. Um, and the other caution I wanted to uh put was in in regard to rec. And it, but it was more on the programming side and somewhat to what Scott said about, you know, people being outdoors and they need to have spaces for people to to do things. Um, as much as we're able with wherever the conditions uh land, I think we need to help to um. Maintain programming for our youth and our children. So uh, so so as as much as we can. You know, provide opportunities for the kids. I think this is gonna hit them hard in a lot of ways. And it will be interesting to hear what Malcolm Gladwell would write twenty years from now about this generation. Anyway, I digress. That's all.
Mr. Brenner. Uh, just quickly, uh, Mr. Chair, uh, you know, as I said before, you know, I I I think. Uh, we could talk uh at great length tonight about different examples and specifics, et cetera. But I really do think that we've got enough general direction uh from a governance level. Uh, with respect to comments like looking at things different, uh, doing things in a different way. Uh, pausing where we can. And and I think what's important is, I would say this, for as many years, uh, when I first was in municipal government where. Uh, many councils did, um, you know, zero percent tax increases, probably for about a ten-year period. And what I'm hearing council say though is, you know, bottom line, we've got a unique situation. We're in a two-year pandemic. Where we can take a pause, where we can look at things differently, where we where we can change things up a little bit. Then look at that, look at that. And I also heard that, uh, I think, uh, Mr. Chair, you said. We're gonna, we're gonna probably have the most intensive staff here. And I would say this fall, if we have further questions, we'll come back to council. Uh, you know, if we're having questions of our own right, that, well, you know what? Not sure council is gonna buy into this service level reduction or this infrastructure project being chopped. I'm sure we can come back to council from that standpoint. But uh, I for one have appreciated the discussion tonight, uh, because I certainly do think that uh. It will have to be an unusually different year uh that requires a lot of thought and perspective.
So this uh, I get a motion here, or what do we do with that, Ricky?
So so so, yeah, so so, Mr. Chairman, um, you know, I mean, the easiest thing you might want to do is just nothing. You just might want to let it go because I think you've given staff, I think, as Mr. Brenner said, you've given staff a lot of direction. Uh, without having to pass a specific motion to that effect. So if you just want to just kind of leave it at the lie where it lies, leave it where it is.
Is council good with that? Yeah, okay, thumbs up, perfect, okay. It's been a hundred degrees for the past week and uh, Mr. Coupa wants to talk about snow removal.
Thank you, Chairman, through you to members of council. Um, yes, here we are with the tender award report for municipal sidewalks, snow clearing in Almira. Uh, I think just a couple of things I want to highlight. We we are now uh disjointed slightly here with the uh timing. Uh, we had uh released everything back in twenty sixteen. And you can see here, there's a long list of recommendations. Um, but what was uh happening is we were trying to negotiate on the extension for the sidewalk snow clearing component in Almira. And uh, there were a number of issues that um at the time Mitchell was facing. Uh, so equipment concerns, their equipment was. So equipment concerns, their equipment was aging, you can appreciate the salt is hard on those pieces of equipment. And there's also insurance rate issues that are sort of a systemic problem in the entire winter control industry that they were facing. So there's a lot of unknowns. We weren't able to agree upon a an increased amount. And that that's why we went to tender, put it out to the public process. And Mitchell was the only bidder. And the increases were less than what we were negotiating. So there's a win win for for everybody, a bit of effort in there. And we we actually got a better price than what we were speaking of before. So we're very happy to report to council to award this to Mitchell Property Maintenance. I think I would say that when you're dealing with a natural environment such as winter, nothing can ever go super smoothly. But we've been very happy with the level of service that they've been providing us. We were able to negotiate everything else appropriately with Mitchell Property Maintenance for the sidewalks note or for, sorry, for the parking lot snow clearing in Almyra and St. Jacobs. And pricing with bags excavating for St. Jacobs, Conestoga and Heidelberg, as well as Wright Lanskey in Maryhill, Bloomingdale and Bresla. So with that cold story, I will be happy to take any questions.
Questions, council?
I'll move the recommendation.
Seconder, Mr. McMillan. Any other discussion or questions? All the question, all in favor? And that is carried. Again, Mr. Pacheco, I guess you're next.
Thank you. This this report before council is to authorize which staff to reallocate funds. We did not identify this as a project in the 2021 cap or sorry, 2020 capital budget deliberations. But it has come to light as there's been significant number of breaks on both Flamingo and Grosse Peak in Almyra. There is a case where our infrastructure is not maintaining its useful life, unfortunately, is is breaking sooner than we would like. So we are have the staff complement internal to to complete this. We have the capacity to do that. And this would be in our time. So we would see this as as a cost saving measure and something that we could take ownership internally. And that's what we're recommending before council here because of some deferrals that have happened outside of our control with two regional projects, Caster Road and the Sawmill Road Project in Bloomingdale. There are sufficient dollars that have already been allocated there by council that we're just asking to move towards this project. And that's what we're we're looking to do. And I'd be happy to answer any questions council have.
Questions?
I'll move the recommendation. Those streets really need to get redone, so I'm all for it.
Do you have a seconder? Mr. Reddick? Any discussion, question? Oh, Scott's already ready to vote, so all in favor? And that is carried.
Thank you.
Ann, are you with us?
Oh, I got one more.
Oh, sorry. Yes. Right. Okay.
So before council here, we have the cost retention for water servicing on Golf Course Road in Conestoga. This is a something we're just looking to take advantage of with the region extending their integrated urban system. This is the third stage of their three phased approach in Conestoga to remove the Golf Course Road well. And as part of that, it just made, it was a cost effective decision to provide servicing to three lots on Golf Course Road that are currently do not have municipal servicing at the property line. Typically, we would go through a special service process. But in this case, because of only being three, the threshold being under 30,000, we're simply asking council to fund this. And then we would recoup costs at a later date when they are required to hook up. And with that, I would have you take any questions.
Questions? Pat? Move it. Okay. Brett? Second? Okay. All in favor? And that is carried. Thank you, Jared.
Thank you.
Hi, Ann. Your turn.
Thanks. Thomas is here as well tonight, so we don't have anything to add. But happy council has any questions about the two projects we want to advance this year. Thomas, can it?
Yeah, through you, Chair Sean's to Ann. The Heidelberg Playground, I might need a little bit of a refresher from budget time. I know Heidelberg, we talked about baseball diamonds and that particular field. And, you know, looking at the overall needs of Heidelberg. What, after the budget meeting, what did you discuss as staff? When we, when we talk about this playground replacement in the, in the general scheme of of how you envision that parkland in Heidelberg?
Thomas, do you want to chat or do I have to?
Sure you, Counselor Sean. So there's a few different moving pieces in that park. So there is a ball diamond at the back end of Heidelberg that is not in use anymore. And with discussions with the Heidelberg Recreation Group, they are fine with us removing that. So we are planning to push the new playground further back from the ball diamond. And that way we can look at eventually when we replace the fencing of the ball diamond, not putting that netting back up in the outfield, which has been extremely costly for Bresla and some of those other parks where it is required.
To add to that, Mr. Chairman, I think we're looking at, you know, obviously ball diamond then used moving forward, so looking to rate how many will continue to light moving forward. So I think that while we feel it's important to advance the playground, I think before we would spend any capital dollars in terms of lighting replacement, I think we would look at the tier one diamonds first. I think we're looking at maybe, you know, eliminating lighting. So there would be a diamond there, but we wouldn't have lighting infrastructure and push those uses to other communities. It would be community use ball and not necessarily high level games. So if that helps with kind of what we're thinking in terms of that rec association.
Oh, yeah. I, I thought we, I thought back to the discussion in January about the fencing that that was part of the issue about replacing it because of the low user rate. And then I think it was discovered that there's only a team in Waterloo that that uses the ball diamond. And there isn't actually any local leagues using it. So I thought a discussion was going to happen about doing something, you know, some sort of engagement with the community as to what to do with the parkland and aside from a baseball diamond. And I I could be wrong, but.
I think our intent through you, Mr. Chair, is to, it would leave the diamond there, but we would not be putting significant infrastructure dollar replacement. And so I think there was some work that needs to be done on the backstop to make it safe. But I don't think that, you know, the current standard is to raise the fencing to a certain height from four feet to 10 feet. Though I think that, while I think that we'd leave a ball diamond in there, I just don't think we would invest any money in new fencing or new lighting until such time as there was a need for another ball diamond of that caliber.
Okay. And then my final question would be, in light of the conversation that you probably heard earlier, where your department came up, it wasn't me, just saying. In in light of the tight belt or the belt tightening that Counselor Sean's was expressing, are these, are these projects that, you know, the playground could go another year and we take on the liability, that kind of thing? Maybe you can speak to the seriousness of of these particular projects in the report.
Sure. So we can start with, you know, certainly with pandemic and as, you know, further to the budget mitigation report and the email that I did circulate staff, you know, Thomas and I and Jen have certainly sat down and are very aware of the the financial picture and the difficulties, right, because of significant revenue loss. So as part of that, we looked at, you know, the operating budget for cuts. And we looked at minor capital and we looked at capital in terms of what projects we could defer, what we felt could be paused to be, you know, responsible and economical. So, you know, we originally had five projects that were approved in the capital budget. And I think for us, we looked at which ones we really felt needed to move forward from liability and, you know, doing some infrastructure, not just laying all of it. And we felt these two projects, we would like to advance. And we were OK with deferring the other three projects to another year. And I think we're very aware, heard the comments tonight, not unexpected by Thomas or I. And we're, you know, really going to take a hard look at the five year capital on what projects we need to continue to move forward. And and where, you know, we, and there are projects we feel that we can pause, right, to maintain the integrity of the infrastructure reserve fund. So I'd like to see these two, I think it's responsible to replace these both financially from an infrastructure perspective as well as liability and risk and, you know, commitments to those communities. You know, and then, yes, as we've noted, is is pushing off some into future years.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions or comments? We have a motion here. Anybody want to move it? Council McMillan? Council Martin? All in favor? And that is that. Thank you. Is there any other business? Forward? Not seeing any, or standing activity list, anybody want to bring that forward? Seeing anything there? Correspondence, we have a correspondence. Anybody want to talk on those or? No?
Only that in the city of Kitchener Day for the essential workers, they chose March 17th, which is St. Patrick's Day. And I, I think that was maybe an oversight. I don't know. It's kind of hard to, you know, if it was National Sandwich Day or something, I wouldn't object. But St. Patrick's Day is kind of special.
So the workers would have to wear green? Okay. So moving on to public notice, we have two public notices. Notice of public meeting scope official plan review August the 25th, 2020. And the second one is notice of public meeting Bresla Properties Limited, 2727 995 Ontario Limited, proposed draft plan of subdivision, official plan amendment and zone change application on September the 1st, 2020. Notice of closed meeting, none. Notice of motion, none. And adjournment, but we do have a special meeting. So I guess we can't adjourn yet. Adjourn this one, okay. So I have Scott seconded by Fred. All in favor? That's carried. Before we go, I want to remind those listeners at home that council is holding a special council meeting right after this one. I will yield the chair to Mayor Sean, the chair of the special meeting. So Mayor Sean.
Thank you. And I guess there is no agenda for this in our package? I I have one, but so wondering, is there?
There was one in, yeah.
Oh, it's separate. Okay, okay. Are there any disclosure with community or interest? None, no resolutions to come forward from close. Moved, okay, I need a mover and a seconder, the council can move, maybe the whole, moved by Counselor Merlin, seconded by Counselor Sean, all of those in favor? Carrie, we have recommendations from community at all tonight. And there are new recommendations that we want to move. And one is, if you want the comments to go forward on the places to grow. The second is the Flamingo Drive, well named postman. And the third one is the master licensing at the when someone moved those, Counselor Rowan, Council McMillan, all those in favor? That's carried. You want to post? You have the sorry.
The Wall Street and business.
Patio.
Yeah. The master license.
Yeah. So you'd like to take those separately?
It didn't matter, it was like, no, I'm the only one that would even pass.
Okay, well, let's, let's, let's deal with number one and number two, which are the comments to places to grow and the Flamingo Drive. Second, those two. Counselor Ryan, Counselor Reddick, all of them in favor of those two. And that's carried. And then I want to take all of number two separately or do you want?
Not.
Oh, okay. Can I move on a second or for number three, which is the patio master licensing, secondly, Counselor Sean, secondly, by Counselor McMillan and all of those in favor? And opposed. Motion on the second readings of the bylaw, once again. Okay, the bylaws are all pertaining to the patio. So a bylaw that calls a portion of Mill Street, a bylaw to establish a business license to commit patio or public patio, the restaurant bar or smaller commercial establishment, and a bylaw to qualify against a mover and seconder for those, Counselor Sean, Counselor Reddick, all of those in favor? And opposed. And that's carried, one opposed. I need a mover and a seconder to the committee, the whole rising reports, council. Moved by Counselor Rowan, seconded by Counselor McMillan, you guys are quick, all of those in favor? Let's carry, motion that council confirms and adopts, proceeding for underneath the whole. Okay, Counselor Rowan and Counselor Reddick, all of us in favor? Keep waiting. Okay, we're almost done. A motion following bylaws and the answer to the court, you read it three times and finally passed. It will be numbered, it's bylaw number 52-2020 and 54-2020. And that will be signed by the mayor, considered with a corporate seal. Once again, those are the patio bylaws, Counselor McMillan and Counselor Sean, all of them in favor? And opposed. One opposed, that's carried. Motion to adjourn. Counselor Sean, that's all. And we will meet again on Tuesday, August 11th. All of them in favor? That's carried, and I will ask council to remain on the call until a live stop.